Order the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for May 25th, 2021. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Howell.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Aquino.
Here.
Chalum Chirla.
Here.
And Kozlowski.
Here. Thank you. Will everybody please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do we have any agenda updates?
Mr. Mayor, you have one agenda update this evening. Item number seven is going to be continued to a later meeting.
It's terrific. Well, we'll start with business from the floor then. This is an opportunity to speak to the council by the pub, from the pub, by the public for any topics that are not on our agenda already this evening. Do we have any speaker cards?
You have three requests to speak and one comment that was submitted by email. So in the audience, we have three speakers. The first will be Jay Coffer. Jay will be followed by, it looks like, Janay Schuman.
Hey, my name's Jay Coffer and I was a resident in Park here and I just wanted to talk to you guys. They're willing to provide showers for the Folsom area and as you know, mental health is a major issue within the community and I believe that happy citizens commit less crimes. When you feel good about yourself, you're also going to go out in the community and you're going to present yourself that way. And also I think it'll success, uh, set people up for success and not failure because let's put it this way, if you didn't take a shower for two weeks, are you going to go get a job? Or I mean, do you want to go on Walmart? No. So your mental health is going to be way lower and mental health patients commit crimes. We seen it the other day, Gary Allen stabbed a dude to death, you know? Maybe something simple as a shower, like, hey, look, we care. And it's free, it don't cost nobody nothing, you know? We'll get the showers provided and I think that it'll really help the community. The homeless are always going to be here. They're not going away. So let's provide services to help them. Don't be a part of the problem, be a part of the solution. You know, that's why I'm asking. Each one of you was elected to help the community and this will benefit the community, not only with mental health, but also because when you're clean, there's less germs, COVID, et cetera, et cetera, you know? One more thing I say, we have Folsom Prison over here and I don't know if you guys have drove past it lately, but the worst of the worst stay in there. Rapists, killers, murderers, you name it. They get provided showers. So the message people are sending is that the homeless are less than the people convicted of crimes. Why are we not providing these people with stuff like that? I don't think we should send that message. I should think, I think we should send a message that, look, Folsom does care and we will take care of our people, whether you're unhoused or your house, whatever it is, Folsom cares. I don't think it'll be a problem, I think it'll be an asset to the community, you know? So just give it a chance. That's all I really got to say and honestly, I'm a little bit ashamed that we even have to vote on something like human basic needs, you know? Uh, it shouldn't even be a question. Yeah, give them a shower. It'll do better for the community. So I shot straight from the hip, that's how I feel and I think it'll benefit the community. So I'm asking you to vote yes to provide the people showers. Basic hygiene shouldn't be voted on.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate that.
Your next speaker is Jeanne Schuman and Jeanne will be followed by Jason Davis.
Hi there.
Jeanne Schuman here from Jake's Journey Home, nonprofit here in Folsom. I only have a few mentions tonight. We work desperately and tirelessly to help bring services here to our unhoused. We talk to them, feed them, clothe them, listen to their story, and then figure out a plan of attack, calling service providers for day treatment, rides, DMV runs, social security services, EDD appointments, college applications, and medical appointments, to name a few. My wish is that once we have the ability to figure out what they need through assessments, that we can move on to prevention. Prevention is key and while we're working to accomplish that, I am seeing just where the shortfalls are. We have lots of dollars being thrown at a broken unhoused system, but the money is not being well spent and it is not fixing the problem. As I meet on the average of at least one to two people, new people, a day. They live in and out of homelessness for many years right here in Folsom. Our population is growing and so will the needs. We have a village of volunteers that are desperately trying to keep up with the needs and the assessments. We have a budget that reflects systemic shortfalls in our community. One thing I might mention, there are many agencies that are willing to assist for free. One situation arose where we had a mobile shower ready to go, they needed a hookup, just a hose bib. They were going to provide showers, medical triage, and vaccines and that didn't happen. I know that at the time, there were alternate facilities, but sometimes people can't make it out there. They can't make it to the locations that we say they have to be at and half the time they don't even know about it. I guess a big thing for me is that having these services open, open up doors to more contacts and more services that are greatly needed. With that situation, I got to meet several other entities that are so willing to come here to Folsom and help us and just saying, sometimes it's better to say yes and see where it all goes. Anyway, I just appreciate you guys listening and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Your next speaker this evening is Jason Davis.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jason Davis. I want to talk about our city's cooling station management plan. Last year, we had a cooling station next door here at the senior center. I believe the citizens were notified about that through the NICSIL, through technology. Those that are unhoused did not have an opportunity to know about that. There were some of us that were driving around town to let others know. It is a challenge when you're unhoused to get all the way over here to the, to the cooling station. I've visited that cooling station many, many times and it was wonderful people that were volunteering, the CERT volunteers. I was always shocked how, how there was very few people and there was so many cases and cases of water sitting in there. Suggestion would be plan ahead. I don't know what the management plan is for cooling stations. Is it a certain level of temperature? How much planning is there? There was only an A-frame sign out by the road, kind of tucked back. It's very difficult and there are some people that frankly just can't get all the way over here. Couple of your fellow police officers on the streets suggested maybe over at Limby Park, providing some form of trailer. I know that is, I know those are costs. And I'm just going to stop there. A few other things I want to share, but with this gentleman coming up and talking about showers, what amazing points he made. I'll tell you, Harbor Church this weekend, they brought in a trailer. It was, it wasn't about the trailer as much as it was about the individuals that were there to welcome the people and to give them guidance. There was a gentleman that showed up, it was very hard to get there. By him just showing up, he now might have access to mental health because the individual said, I think I can connect you. So when you're talking about some of these services and you guys are thinking about the line item tonight on homelessness, it is about the services that are wrapped around that. So I don't have a lot more time, but I, I just want to really emphasize that the way that cooling station was handled last year, it was very unclear and there was not a lot of people utilizing it and a whole lot of resources there that feels like they could have been used in, in other ways. Maybe that was going out into this, out, out and actually handing out water, building relationships and offering them a ride over or some, some sort of guidance. So as we are getting into the warmer season, I would sure hope that there is already a plan and I would love somebody to let the community know at what point does that cooling station open? Is it a certain degree? It just seems common sense. And to his point, yeah, when, when, when many individuals say, well, go out and get a, get a job, it's difficult when you're not clean. So, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. Excellent. We have a comment to, we want read, read into the record.
Yes, you do. Okay. This is from a letter from Rennie James and Rennie writes, "Good evening, council, city manager, and city parks manager. My family has lived in Briggs Ranch for 25 years. We moved here when my children were teens and I was still working. We have been fortunate to be able to have our grandchildren live with us from kindergarten to Folsom Hills Elementary until they graduated from high school. Rarely did a week go by that my wife and/or I did not visit the park with our grandchildren. They have moved on now and not many days go by that I don't walk to and around the park. It's beautiful with families there every day, weather permitting. I have noticed the deterioration of the park in a couple areas, loss of trees, and trash container maintenance. The cans need to be repaired so that they are securely mounted and replaced when they are removed. Trees, by my count, more than 15 trees, have been removed without any replacements. To the bottom line, I am no longer able to physically plant trees or repair trash cans. My time has passed. I would like to see how I might be able to acquire a couple trees of your choice and have them planted at your preferred location and direction in the fall of this year, 2021, at Briggs Ranch Park. Please contact me if you are interested in joining me with this. Thank you, Rennie James." And he provides contact information.
Excellent. Very thoughtful. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on an item that's not on the agenda this evening? Okay. Fantastic. All right. Let's call the first item then, please.
Okay. Your first item this evening is scheduled presentation item number one. This is a presentation of the city's compliance with water quality protection standards and groundwater monitoring at the Corporation Yard.
Good evening, Mayor Kozlowski, members of the council, Marcus Yasutaki, environmental water resources director. As Krista pointed out, this is an update to city council on the water quality protection standards and groundwater monitoring that the city has been required to do out at the Corporation Yard. I'll give you a little bit of background. This is, you know, some pictures on, in site history. You can look to the left, it once was used as a wastewater treatment plant and the picture on the right is a more current picture of what currently exists today. The area in, not in question, but the area that is of specifics tonight is this area kind of shaded in a blue or green area designated by the landfill area. Just some additional site history, obviously dredging back in the, the Gold Rush days, 1900s, 1800s was, as I mentioned, a wastewater treatment plant, mid 50s to sometime in the 70s and then was turned into a Corporation Yard landfill. It was primarily used for city remnants, so any street sweeping, construction debris, things of that nature for city public facilities at that time was used. This was not, as far as I understand, open to public dumping like you, you might use a, a public landfill for. So this was primarily city waste and demolition debris that was contained here and then green waste just from city facilities themselves. In 1996, the landfill was closed and at that time, they put what they call a construction cap on top of the landfill, which primarily consisted of backfill clay material that was used as an actual cap over what was previously used from 74 to 87. From a regulatory environment perspective, this site is under the purview of the Regional Water Quality Control Board. So in 1995, there was a waste discharge requirement order that was basically issued to the city at that time and that identified what the closure requirements were to put that cap on the, the landfill. So basically that was, you know, the environment and the order in which the city had to maintain that cap and then the monitoring and maintenance that had to occur once that cap was put in place. And at that point in time, there were basically gas monitoring wells, if you want to call it that, that were put in place just to measure any off gases that were, could potentially be created from the site. Then in 2008, the, the city got a new waste discharge requirement order and that's the, the second order listed up there. And in October of 2008 to about September of 2009, the landfill that was previously capped, the waste was removed from the landfill. So back in the 2008, 2009 timeframe, if you ever went out to the courtyard, you might have seen large piles of debris. Each one of those piles had to be sorted and then tested and then that material could be off-hauled to another landfill area and then the clean material that was left over from that could be used to fill in where the landfill material was removed. Couple of requirements that were part of that order was stormwater discharge requirements, so monitoring any stormwater discharges that were leaving the site and a lot of that work was done by Corporation Yard staff and, and Public Works and their stormwater quality division. So thanks to Dave and his team, they've done a lot of that work, you know, over the years and since this order was put in place. They've also helped a lot in coordination when we've had consultants come out there to do the monitoring for groundwater levels and then most recently, when we actually destructed the wells. And then the other requirement was actually to monitor groundwater just to make sure that there weren't any impacts to the groundwater and I'll also explain that there was very little groundwater in the area to impact if there were any impacts. So the groundwater monitoring, this is a, just a depiction on the left of the well network. So these are the various wells that were installed out at the Corporation Yard. And in 2017, this well location here, this well location here, and this well location here, there was an amendment to the Brown and Caldwell contract that authorized the installation of six new wells, three shallow wells and then three deep wells. Because what, I'll talk about why that is and then this table here on the right are just the different constituents that are being tested for and sampled when these, when the samples, the water quality samples are sent to a lab for analysis. And so the waste discharge requirement identifies the different levels at which the city needs to be under in, in order to achieve the groundwater monitoring results that are in the waste discharge requirement. So groundwater monitoring, this was quarterly sampling. We did have to complete semi-annual and annual reports as part of this. So every six months, we were submitting a report to the regional board for their review. And one thing we were able to do and show is that there are two distinct water bearing zones out at the site. And that's why we installed the three new wells back in 2017 was because some of the other wells that were installed previously were installed over the lower zone and the upper zone. So you couldn't really identify what the, you can identify what the analysis was by the results, but we felt that we were getting a mix between the upper zone and the lower zone, so the results weren't as accurate as they could be. And so we got approval from the regional board to really develop two different well depths, a shallower well depth, you know, 25 to 35 feet, and then a deeper well depth, which is typically greater than 60 feet. And there's this merton formation, which is very, basically a low permeability layer. So that was a distinct barrier basically between the upper zone and the lower zone. And so the results from 2018, 2019, and 2020 showed that there was a distinct difference, which then helped us reach the levels that were required in the waste discharge requirements. Yes, Mayor?
Is, is the, this merton formation dense enough that you can draw from the lower depth without any contamination from up above? Or do you have to sort of by process of elimination, sort what you find in the shallower depth from the?
So what you said first is correct. So there isn't any impact.
Completely separate.
Completely separate. Yep. And that's one thing we wanted to show with the new well network because we were having, if you want to call it cross-contamination of the results.
Right.
When they were, when a well was over the two layers. So we had a plan in place to show the two distinct different layers out there. So the results, what we had to do is we had to show three successive years or 12 sampling reports in a row that the results based on the analytics were below the thresholds that were in the waste discharge requirement. Again, the results indicated and showed for us, for Brown and Caldwell, who was our consultant, and to the regional board staff that yes, there were two distinct different zones and different layers. And the results also show that because we are meeting the requirements of the waste discharge requirement for the analysis we are doing, that there should be a rescission of the waste discharge requirement so that we do not have to continue groundwater monitoring on an annual basis. And so we got approval from state water board or regional water board staff to proceed with the destruction of the wells. We did that in April of 2021 and then about two weeks ago, we submitted the final well abandonment report to the regional board staff. And so they are currently reviewing the information that's contained in the, in that destruction report to see if we need anything, need to add anything else. We don't believe we do, but you know, it's in there basically hands for, for review. So the next steps and city attorney, Steve Wong, has helped us with this is to finalize a deed covenant for the property. The regional board requires this, at least that I'm familiar with, with all the other kind of clean closure activities that they've, or they've been a regulatory agency for. And really the, the biggest item in here is that the Regional Water Quality Control Board states that the property does not appear to present an unacceptable risk for uses of the property. So they, they can't, the way I read it and in discussions with them, they aren't in a position to say there would absolutely be no risk ever, you know, for, for the property, which, you know, I understand from a regulatory standpoint. What I can say in extreme confidence is because of the distinct differences between the groundwater levels and the groundwater, the two different zones, the lack of actually production that you can get from the groundwater system, I wouldn't, if I'm in the position, wouldn't ever recommend installing any wells to try to get any water out of because by the time you pump the water to just purge the, the well itself, you wouldn't have any more water to pump. So there's just no groundwater there to begin with and, and if you wanted to read through the reports, you could see how different the water levels are in the spring and summer versus the fall and winter. So spring or summer and winter fairly dry and winter, or sorry, summer and fall dry, winter and spring get a little more, but in some cases, in the spring and summer months, there was hardly any water to even send to get an analysis in. They were really having to, to work. So the deed covenant has been reviewed by the city attorney. The information has been sent back and is now with the regional board team for their final review. There weren't many markups from, that we included in the last report or the last transmission of the deed covenant back. So we believe that it's in fairly good shape to, to move forward and we expect that sometime either in June, and it's now probably looking more like July, that regional board staff will recommend rescission of that waste discharge requirement to the regional board. And so that clears us up of, you know, any continued monitoring and, you know, any regional board requirements that we would have moving forward. With that, I'll take any questions. And again, I do want to thank the, the public work staff for all the help, at least the eight years I've worked on this, you know, for always being there to get access and get things out of the way when we had to do some of the monitoring or the well drilling. So they've been very helpful.
Sounds like a combination of type of soil and lack of water in the ground helped us not create a mess in days gone by, so.
Correct.
A relatively easy one to clean up.
Yes.
Any questions from the council?
Oh, I just want to thank Marcus for making us aware, you know, educated. Thank you so much.
The only comment I would make, Marcus, I believe that the plant probably didn't actually close, the wastewater plant, probably didn't actually close until regional sand opened, which was early 80s.
Okay.
So I think the plant actually opened in 82.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Fantastic. Thank you, Marcus.
I'll stay here for the next one. Did you want to call it out, Krista?
Hey.
No? Okay.
Who is going to present the next thing?
Yep. I'll save you the, the breath, I guess. Yep. So second item tonight is the water shortage contingency plan and just for those that are listening in, this is different than what will be presented at the end of the meeting on the, on the drought order or the governor's drought order. So background, this is a requirement of the California Water Code. The section's listed there. There are guidelines that were prepared by the Department of Water Resources in terms of what content and material needs to make up a water shortage contingency plan. What's new this year that was not in place in 2015 and 2010 for urban water management planning is that the plan actually has to be a separate document that's approved by the governing body, in this case, city council. It's not for approval tonight, but it will be coming back to you in, in three weeks at the, the June meeting. And so that's something that's a little different, which is why we wanted to discuss it tonight. There is a draft available for public review as well that hit the streets, I think it was May 7th, I believe. So the document is available for public review as well, which is one of the requirements of both the urban water management plan and this plan. So what this is intended to do, in, in this case, the city, is to identify any foreseeable or unforeseen water shortages that could exist within your jurisdiction. Developing, there is a development of procedures that we have to include that identifies what the city will do on an annual basis relative to looking at potential demands for a year and then projected supplies for that year and to see if there's any imbalance. So basically looking at your supply versus demand portfolio for a year. And then you determine whether or not, is there a shortage or surplus? Identify response actions if there is a shortage. So if we do find a year where demands would exceed supplies, what steps are available to the city in, in order to meet that delta? And then this also has to identify legal authority and enforcement of the response actions, which is currently included in Folsom Municipal Code, Chapter 13.26, Water Conservation. So these are the, the 12 elements that are required in a water shortage contingency plan. I'm not going to go over every single one of them. As I mentioned, the draft is available for review, but I did want to highlight the item number one, which is both in the urban water management plan and the water shortage contingency plan. And that's the requirement of an agency to do this water supply reliability analysis or supply-demand assessment. And so that's one of the key points that's new to the city and all the other water agencies that have to prepare these plans. It's very similar to what we did in 2016 when we were coming out of the drought at that time, was we had to self-certify and other agencies did, that you had supplies that would meet your demands. So then you were no longer under the mandatory conservation requirements or reduction requirements from the governor's executive order at that time and then through the power of the state water board. So these are, are the 12 items, they're all found in our plan. The drought risk assessment, one thing that's different in this chapter as well is that previously, you would look at a normal year, a single year, and then three dry years. Well, that changed to five dry years. So we would look at five consecutive dry years as a potential scenario that you would find yourself in or an agency would find theirself in. And then you had to identify if there would be any supply reductions by year type. And so this table just identifies percentage-wise what those reductions would be. The two pre-1914 water rights that are listed in the, in the first two rows, those contracts do not have any shortage provisions in them. So if we request the 22,000 acre feet, we would expect by contract to receive the 22,000 acre feet. The CVP repayment contract, that is under the municipal and industrial water shortage policy for the Bureau of Reclamation and so we can see what we projected as potential year types, the worst one being the last year at a 75% reduction from that contract. The Ashland contract, that's the wholesale water we receive from San Juan Water District that we retail in the Ashland area. And we saw that, you know, there was, I think it was 36% at one point in time, 32% under the mandatory requirements of the state water board. So we use that as our worst-case scenario for the Ashland contracts. And then the groundwater extraction and treatment or get water in, within the Aerojet property, there currently are not any reduction short or provisions for that. And that's the remediated groundwater that Aerojet Rocket Dine treats and then was putting back into their non-potable industrial system. And so there aren't any requirements for reductions on that contract. So this is just what it looks like in, in overall numbers. So you could see obviously in a normal year, we're at the high end of supplies available to the city and then at the low end, 32, 720, the total supply, we have, you know, little less than 30,000 on the potable side. We don't include the get AB because it's non-potable, but we do have some ideas that we're working through with one of our consultant teams to potentially move that water into the plan area purple pipe or non-potable pipe because that is one of the requirements. because that is one of the requirements of the plan area. Previous, uh, discussions have potential savings if we're able to utilize that fully between probably eight hundred and a thousand acre feet on an annual basis, because that would take care of a lot of the outdoor irrigation in non-residential parcels or on non-residential parcels.
Is the volume pulled out of the Aerojet property, um, dictated by their remediation plan? So they have to pull that much out or is that just a typical amount?
That's the am- the, the thirty-two fifty is the amount we have contracted with for under a two thousand and seven agreement. They actually pull more out than that.
Is there total dictated by the remediation requirement?
Yes.
Or, okay.
Yeah, the, the, the total-
So they have to extract and treat a certain amount of water regardless of other circumstances?
They have to extract and treat a whole bunch of water and much of it goes back into the lake, into the river.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And so this is just how much that we have available under
Gotcha.
existing contracts.
Thank you.
Yep. And from a numbers perspective, this is what it looks like if we looked at a first year through a fifth year relative to, you know, supplies and demands. And so you can see in the first year, and this is that build-out, twenty-four, twenty, twenty-four five is roughly the build-out time, uh, you could see that, you know, even in the fifth year, we still have a, a proposed surplus of about seventy-two hundred acre feet. Uh, and this is all contained in, in the urban water management plan, but I just wanted to show figuratively what the percentages actually mean, uh, i- in numbers and, you know, the supply versus demands. So the implementation, uh, we do have to conduct a public hearing for this, which is what we are planning to do on June eighth. We've, uh, had one notice in the paper and I think another one's on the twenty-seventh, if I remember correctly. So we will meet our noticing requirements. Uh, we do propose to have this on June eighth, where we will present both the urban water management plan and the water shortage contingency plan. As I mentioned before, the public draft was made available for both of these plans on May seventh, so available for, for the public to see. And what we are allowed to do, if supplies change for the city or any agency for that matter, you can bring back the plan in front of your governing body to include any new items. So it's not something that you have to do every five years, like a urban water management plan. You, as an agency, can bring this back if needed, if there is a, what you believe is a significant change in supplies or demands. Uh, one thing that we do plan to do as well, and I did mention this earlier, is the water shortage contingency plan as it currently exists resides in the Folsom Municipal Code. And it identifies the stages and everything else. Well, currently the stages don't exactly match what the new requirements are. So what we are proposing to do is get the water shortage contingency plan approved by city council. And then we'll come back in the summer and line up and m- make sure that now the municipal code sections match what is in the water shortage contingency plan. And so we will be working through that once, uh, if everything goes well and we get approval on June eighth. And, and that's something that would come back, uh, in the summertime. So with that, I'll take any questions on this.
Okay. Rosario?
I don't have any questions.
Carrie?
Good. Thank you.
I just have one. So, so you have to do this plan every five years or every year? What was the frequency?
The urban water management plan is every five years.
Right.
The water shortage contingency plan, this is the first year you have to do it. And then if your, uh, supplies potentially change, eh, whether you get more or somehow you receive less because of something happening, then if that triggers what you might feel is a significant change, then you would come back and identify what that change is and then get that re-approved by the governing body.
So, so going forward, do we have to update it annually or is there a schedule?
No, there is not any required update, uh, for this.
Got it. Okay.
It'll only, basically only have to be updated if there are significant changes to the water supply, either increases or decreases.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, Marcus, if you don't mind, can you pull the slide, uh, uh, on slide number four? Thank you so much. Now slides has a numbers, so we can-
That's a new addition for tonight's meeting. We now have page numbers on all the slides, so council members can refer to it easily.
Technology.
Yes.
Sorry, this-
Oh, uh, I, I can probably ask in general though, on slide four, there is item number four or five, communications. I know the drought is coming. I mean, that's what we're all anticipating. And we look at the lake, yep, slide four and item number five, communications protocols.
Yes.
Very much interested on that one.
Mm-hmm.
And I know we are going to have the public hearing, which is different from how we can educate the community, right?
Yes.
And that's what we hear when we go out, our eighty thousand bosses out there in the community, which whom, whom we represent, they always bring the point, oh, Folsom South, and you guys are putting the restrictions. If there was no Folsom South, and things like those, right? How do we educate them more and more? And your slide number seven is a perfect example for everybody to see, even in twenty forty-five, we still have a seven thousand acre feet of water surplus.
Yep.
So i- it is important, people has to register that fact, uh, and I, I, that's where I'm very much interested.
Yep. So if, if you do want to look at the plan, we do identify a communications protocol. It is something that I have, uh, wrangled in, Christine Brainerd, to take a look at, just to make sure we're including all of the messaging platforms we have. But it could be anything from news releases, press releases, interviews, direct mailers, bill inserts, e-newsletter, you know, social media, anything and everything that we probably have at our disposal would be available for, uh, communications. And I expect, if it's anything like twenty fourteen or twenty fifteen, it would be a, a lot of interviews and, you know, a lot of messaging material being sent, uh, to, uh, to our residents. One thing that we're doing this year, uh, which has been helpful from Christine and her team and then Dawn Smith, is each week in the e-newsletter, we're actually sending like a water use, water efficiency tip. So one week it was check your sprinkler timers. I think this week it was, um, discussing the rebate programs the city has. So each week we plan to roll out these different tips for, for our customers to take advantage of. So I'd expect there would be, be a lot more messaging and a lot more, uh, interviews.
Yeah.
You're not going door-to-door yet, though.
Not yet.
Yeah. It's, it's not election season, otherwise we might have done that. But, uh, but only one thing though. I don't know whether we are planning to have any workshops, you know, which are more interactive and around. I just want, let me look at it, if any solutions we can do in the best interest of residents, prepare them mentally, because it is coming.
You know, YK, it's already here.
It's here.
And, but I think the, the important thing is, um, that you, you need to understand that, you know, a workshop's a great idea, but people that are going to show up at a workshop probably know much, much more about this than, than anybody else in town. And the people that don't understand what's going on and anybody that's still telling you that, um, we shouldn't be sending water south of the freeway is not going to show up at a workshop. They have not kept themselves informed. I mean, the city has done a, a yeoman's effort in making sure that John Q. Public understands
Yeah.
what the circumstances are with regard to water, what the water supply is, um, how we're providing water to south of the freeway and the twenty percent reductions that we have been able to achieve in years past.
Good. Thank you. And your slide seven is going to be my Facebook profile page.
Okay.
Which talks about availability.
Yeah. It is, it is good to be reminded and have in plain chart form that even after a long drought with expected curtailments, we still have a surplus of water, so, available to us. So that's, that's all great news. Any other questions? Okay. Marcus, thank you very much.
Thank you, Marcus.
Thank you. We'll see you later this evening.
All right. Great. Um, call the next item.
That takes us to the consent calendar.
I'll move consent with, um, pulling item number nine.
Okay, we want to pull number, number seven has been eliminated from the consent.
Well, it's been continued. So yeah, so one through six, eight, and ten through thirteen.
Okay. Any others?
I would like to pull the item number thirteen, please.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm moving, um, excuse me, three through six, eight, ten, eleven, twelve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalamchela?
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes.
And I'm pulling nine to recuse, um, of an abundance of caution, because it may be within fifteen hundred feet of a space that I lease.
Gotcha. Okay. Um, with that recusal, is there a motion for item number nine or any questions about it from the other?
I will move adoption, uh, resolution number one oh six three zero.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalamchela?
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes. And then resolution number ten, six, three, four, item number thirteen.
Thirteen, yep. Uh, the question is on page five and six, this is about the, um, a warrant security. On the five, on the ten, item number ten, we are talking about one year. When it comes to the repairs, we are adding the applicable statutory limitations. So is there a possibility we can add that condition for number ten under the warranties?
Well, we've approved item number ten at this point. I-
He talking about item thirteen?
I, I think he's talking about number ten on page one hundred and eighty-five of your packet, if I'm-
Okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha. So within-
I'm sorry.
Within resolution ten, six, three, four, you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, just adding that, that way it is tied to the warranty, any applicable statutory limitations in addition to one-year warranty.
Mr. Wong, can you comment on that? Is it?
Yes, if I may, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Chana Chala, and the members of the city council, this is pertaining to, um, subdivision improvements. This is not warranty for the individual homes, if that's what you're talking about.
That's true.
This does not pertain to individual homes. This pertains to subdivision improvements that the subdividers require to install, such as streets, curbs, gutter, streetlights.
Or stop signs or anything.
Correct. That's right. So you, are you talking about statute of a limitation?
Adding the statutes that were under number ten to maintain the warranty.
What page are you looking at?
Page one eighty-five of the, of item thirteen, Adam.
Page one eighty-five of your, of your packet.
Yep. I am sorry, uh, Councilmember Chala and Chala, I'm not understanding your request.
Oh, my question is, um, and item number, oh, sorry, not item, paragraph number ten, the warranty is only one year.
That's a statu- that's a statutory required warranty, one year. Yes, sir.
Is that one-year statutory or it is a statutory requirements plus or one-year, whatever is longer?
No, no, just one year, period. One year from when the improvement is completed.
I am not reading that way, but I respect liars.
One year following con- completion. That's the last sentence on page five. Uh, one year following completion.
Okay. Uh, I read it the first and second lines, if within the warranty period or the applicable statutory limitations, whichever is longer. I paused there, so that's, that's why.
I, I'm not seeing a comment about statute of limitations.
I am not either, sir.
The warranty security item, number ten, um, is simply laying out that, uh, the subdivider provide a one-year warranty and that the warranty sec- the, excuse me, a warranty security, so a bond or something like that.
Yeah, I did see in the form of a bond, warranty bond.
Not less than ten percent of the cost of the construction or improvements. So it's-
YK, are you confusing that with the typical ten-year that applies to the homeowner?
No.
There's, there's never a ten-year warranty on, on the, um, the public infrastructure? There's typically a statute of limitations. If a homeowner tries to go back and sue the builder, once that ten-year is passed, they can't go back and sue the builder. But this is different from that.
Oh, I gotcha. Okay. So, so I, I think I see what you're talking about. So item number ten, um, is explicit in saying that the warranty security shall be established for one year. Um, item number eleven says that, um, repair or reconstruction of defective work, if within the warranty security period or the applicable statute of limitations, whichever is longer. Um, is that, so that's the distinction?
That's right.
So, so you're thinking that item number ten should refer to the statute of limitations, whatever that may be?
Yeah.
I gotcha. Okay. Well, I think they, I think they-
One is the security and one is the repair.
Yeah.
It's not the same thing.
They, I think they cover each other. So restating the statute of limitations within the warranty security description, I, I'll leave that for the city attorney to decide, but-
Thank you for-
It seems like it may, it would just be redundant potentially.
Okay.
Yeah.
At least you got my point.
Really interesting question. I didn't, that's, uh-
Thank you.
That's a bit of mining to find that spot. So Steve, is there any kind of other language that addresses what the statute of limitations may be on any particular improvements?
No, sir.
No?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay. Are you aware of some statute of limitations in particular, Mr. Chalamchela?
Well, not knowing if it is or under this category, I don't know what that category is.
Okay.
Right? So we want to cover, you know, as a city, even though when we take over, if there is, repairs are coming, let's cover under this category as well. I don't know the definitions of that category, that's all.
And I would think that would be covered by state law would dictate what the statute of limitations would be.
Yeah, I'm trying to recall any instance where I ran into a statute of limitations on a warranty period for constr- for a construction project.
Public, I've never seen it. So-
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, I believe-
It, it may be that the statute of limitations comment is extraneous in the end, but it, it's providing some kind of protection, I suppose.
I think I understand Councilmember Chala's, uh, inquiry better now. So the two sections are separately distinct. The warranty security in section ten of the subdivision improvement agreement is a statuary required warranty in the form of a bond, and that's one year, one year only.
Mm-hmm.
As opposed to indemnity in terms of failed improvement within a lawful statutory, uh, statute of a limitation period, which we would, which we, we would have the right to pursue, no matter what, it's already in the law. So we don't need to add to it, but it would not make sense to add that language into section ten.
Section ten, okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for making the inquiry, sir.
Okay. Any other questions about item number thirteen?
I'll move it.
I'll move. I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chalamchela?
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes. Okay, please-
Thank you, Mayor, for sparing few minutes to clarify that one.
Oh, yeah, no problem. Yeah, no, it was an interesting question. Okay, let's call the next item, please.
This takes you to old business, item number fourteen, resolution number one zero six two three, a resolution adopting the city manager's fiscal year twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, operating and capital budgets for the city of Folsom, the successor agency, the Folsom Public Financing Authority, and the Folsom Ranch Public Financing Authority.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Uh, we return to you tonight with the city manager's fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, operating and capital budgets. Uh, a couple of updates I'd like to provide if I could. Uh, first of all, there was a discussion at the last meeting that, uh, perhaps we could find another twenty-five thousand dollars to add to the twenty-five thousand dollars I already proposed as a line item for homelessness issues and needs. So I wanted to report back on that. Uh, just a reminder that we are currently spending an estimated eight hundred and twenty-two thousand on staff costs associated with homelessness, and that includes police officers, code enforcement officers, planners helping with grant administration, fire personnel working on incidents, and maintenance staff. We also spend about eighty-one thousand on hard costs, including our contract with the navigator, cleanup contracts, repairs, and solid waste disposal fees, among others. Um, the comment did come up that perhaps we could just pull twenty-five thousand dollars from the staff, uh, cost side of the ledger and put it into the hard cost side of the ledger. Unfortunately, that doesn't really generate any true savings, um, as those are employees who we pay, uh, no matter what, and they have a huge list of other responsibilities and, and then some. Uh, that said, in reviewing possibilities for finding that additional twenty-five thousand, it did occur to me that we may be getting a small grant for ladder fuel abatement in the next few months. And if we get that, we could come back and ask you if you want to swap that general fund expenditure for this purpose. In the meantime, twenty-five thousand is already proposed in the document before you, um, in addition to the nine hundred thousand or so we already spent. And hopefully we'll be able to add another twenty-five thousand mid-year if that is the council's desire. Also, although it is not part of the council's adoption tonight- Also, although it is not part of the council's adoption tonight, but it does correlate and was mentioned several times during your last budget discussion, I want to share an update on the American Rescue Plan Act dollars we have been expecting. I am very disappointed to share tonight that we were extremely frustrated to learn just a few days ago that Folsom's allocation under the American Rescue Plan Act, it's called the ARPA, ARPA Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund will be far less than what we had been consistently told. Folsom will be receiving about 8.375 million, rather than the 15.3 million we had expected. Without getting into a huge amount of detail at this point, it appears it comes down to how the federal government classified our city for purposes of the ARPA. We are generally called what's called a non-entitlement city, meaning that we don't receive community development block grant funds directly from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. We instead receive them through a contract with Sacramento Housing and redevelopment Agency. If we were to be treated as a non-entitlement city for purposes of ARPA, we would have received 15.3 million. Unfortunately, we recently discovered that likely due to our population being over 50,000, which is kind of a cutoff, the federal government treated us as an entitlement or metropolitan city for purposes of ARPA, and that shift alone translated into a $6.9 million drop in our future allocation. We will discuss this more at a June or July city council meeting as we continue to sort through the details, but I wanted you all to be aware of this because it is very concerning. Tomorrow, at our request, the mayor and I are meeting with Congressman Bera and staff to ask for Congressman Bera's guidance and leadership in helping us to understand how this happened, asking that the Department of Treasury reexamine Folsom's allocation and taking any action possible to restore our expected funding. I will continue to keep you posted as to progress, but at this point, I wanted to be sure, I was candid, that we are expecting 8.375 million, half now and half in 12 months. With that, CFO Stacy Tumani and I are both available to answer any questions or receive any comments regarding the preliminary budget, and of course, you are able to move and vote to adopt the budget tonight if you are prepared to do so. Thank you.
Very good. Questions, questions from the council? Rosario?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Carrie?
No, I'm good. The, the only good thing is that we had always looked at that as being one-time money that was gonna hopefully fill in some blanks that were created because of the change in our income stream last year, so.
The good news is we treated it separately from the budget process. We'd be in a world of hurt if we had built that into our budget.
Right.
Agreed. Miss, Madam Vice Mayor? YK?
Yeah, no, I'll wait for the second round.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll move the budget.
Oh, we need to have an opportunity for the public to comment. Do we have speaker cards? Okay, let's, let's have our public, public comments. And just so everybody out there knows, the city council has had a number of discussions on this topic as the week has gone by, so please don't take our lack of emotional tantrum throwing for the fact that we're not very upset about this.
I think you mean weeks, that we were made aware. No, I don't want people to think that the council has had discussions that the public wasn't present for.
I'm sorry.
This is our third council meeting that we've talked about it.
Yeah, exactly.
And we were made aware of the, the change in the federal funding by the city manager, each of us individually this week.
Yeah. Very good. Public comment.
Okay. Your first speaker will be Heather Riley. Heather will be followed by Beth Croto.
Welcome.
Hello. So, I put the wrong thing on the little card, but it all has to do with the same thing that she just talked about, homeless and the budget, and that was real nice to hear. But we had an opportunity a couple of weeks ago to get showers out here, that's kind of like what they were talking about, and they said that we needed a vote from you, and the funding that she was saying, there's not a lot there, but we want it like recovery house and, you know, stuff like resources here. If you guys could just give us an opportunity to have these showers come out to the park with the medical staff, they were gonna do free assessments and stuff, and free vaccinations, and bring it to our guys, just the amount that we need it to vaccinate them. To me, at this point, that would be a blessing and just more resources in Folsom for recovery, not just transition homes, but even outpatient program, where I guys can go once a week and just get someone to talk to about their recovery. And that would just be amazing, that would be a step forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Your next speaker is Beth Croto, who will be followed by Vijay Jana Legata.
Can I take this off?
We prefer you leave it on.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for this three minutes, I appreciate that. I know you guys are working so hard on the budget. And again, I am passionate about the unhoused, and the one thing I want to say is that I really believe that Folsom is ready for a change. There are things happening, and our city has to get our homeless out of tents, out of trees and bushes, and it's possible. I really do believe it's possible, if we're willing to look at some changes. For the first time ever, there's many agencies and volunteers who are currently assisting the unhoused, and they're joining forces. We're starting to talk and to be strategic on the services that we're providing and planning for the future, planning for our future. We want to develop a plan for Folsom that involves intervention and prevention, not just managing and monitoring the situation, which is what I believe has been being done. It is time that we make some changes. So I said that some people in agencies that are currently serving the homeless population are now talking. So just to explain this to you, next week, for three days, there's a group that involve Heart, Powerhouse, Jake's Journey Home, Folsom PD, the Navigator, City Council, a local chaplain, and a couple of community volunteers who will be sitting and discussing what our situation is, coming up with a program, identifying issues, and developing a plan. We will be reporting back to you on the results, but until then, I just want to encourage help from the city in the budget. One thing that we have come to a conclusion of is that we need a place. We need a place in Folsom, maybe called a community care center, a day program, where services can be being offered on a regular basis. We need services here in Folsom, not in downtown Sacramento. We need someone that's available multiple days of the week, where people can meet with a county mental health worker, start the process of getting the services they need. And for those who are ready, we can offer assistance with the addictions and get them started on their road to recovery. We need assessments to be being done. We, at our day center, could provide a shower, a computer, electrical outlet, charge phones. We have volunteers who want to serve, they can help folks obtain ID and social security cards, birth records, insurance cards, military discharge papers. Volunteers have offered to help with resumes, job applications, getting registered for school, finding medical and dental care, and of course, the issue of finding housing. However, we have to deal with the root cause of homelessness, and we know that the majority of time, it's related to mental health and addiction issues. So right now, we have those on the street who are asking for help. Within the last few months, we have folks who have registered for school, moved into Heart's transitional living program, found jobs, and we have one who, after years of homelessness and a serious drug addiction, has sought out help and will be entering into a treatment program next week. Volunteers have been working hard to provide the needed services here in Folsom, and this isn't enabling, like sometimes I know volunteers are accused of, this is providing help to those who want it, but they don't know where to start. Often, they just need someone who cares and can offer a hand up. But it's going to take the city's help, we need the funds to bring these services to Folsom. I know that last meeting, you talked about where the funds were gonna come from, thank you for reviewing that, I appreciate the effort that's being taken for that. But what I believe is that we need to change how we are using the money. Instead of just monitoring, managing the homeless needs, this money needs to be reassigned to be able to use for intervention and prevention. Many of us believe that the funds that are currently designated for the homeless navigator could be better utilized. Sacramento Self-Help Housing has told me and many others personally that Folsom does not want the services they offer. They have said they can't provide us what we need. I personally feel like we are wasting the city's money, spending it on a program that isn't desired. However, because many others are talking and volunteers have been doing the work, we do see things happening. There's a track record of ways that services are being offered. So in closing, I do want to thank you for the $25,000 that's been designated, this is a start, more is needed, and as you discuss how the federal money is going to be being spent, I would just encourage you to look at this homeless situation as an emergency. It is an emergency, and Folsom wants the homeless off the streets, and many of them want to be off the streets too. Not all, I understand that, but many do.
Thank you. Thank you. I, I wanted to let you get to the end of your comments, because I'm sure they'd like to applaud, and I think you're speaking for a lot of other people, but just as a, a little bit of coaching for everybody, the little light that's on the thing gives you three minutes, and then a red light comes up, there's a yellow first.
Oh, I didn't see that.
Yeah, it's right to, right in front of you, right there.
Okay.
Please, please take note of that, so that we don't, we, everybody is supposed to get three minutes, that was five, which is fine, but if you're preparing comments on one sheet of paper, it needs to be in like 14-point type, or you're gonna run over three minutes.
I'm sorry about that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, your next speaker is Vijay Jana Legata, who will be followed by Judy Alexander.
Welcome.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak in front of the council, honorable mayor, council members, and my fellow presidents. First of all, just two points I want to make, one is that I want to thank you for the, making it as a line item in the budget, which is, I think is a big deal. And other, other thing I want to, thank you for the COVID response that the city has done. Folsom has, definitely has the ender reputation that it's a safe city. So, yeah, despite having so much opposition going on to the COVID, the very point of the COVID, from many major part of our fellow citizens in the United States, so, so, yeah, just following the good protocols for the COVID, that's it, thank you for that. And homelessness, obviously giving much support for the homelessness, that's also a good thing. And the, the point I want to make here is that I, I really appreciate that you are starting to consider that homelessness is not a temporary issue, just can come and go, but as a permanent thing, kind of, almost like unfortunately here to stay. So I don't know, personally, I don't see this is going to go away for a long time, unless, you know, there are so many root causes, mental health and income inequality, all these, those two big, big issues that, unless those two are, those two are, I think, are the major sources of the homelessness. So obviously, I'm here to support for $25,000, but also to increase it to $50,000. And finally, I kind of, I didn't understand city managers' thing, like, how come $800,000 just for the supporting homelessness thing, like, you know, like a staff is being paid for the so many other things anyway? So I don't know.
So, so we-
How can you put it in the homelessness bucket?
Yeah, well, they, there's a bunch of city staff that spend a lot of time directly managing issues surrounding homelessness, and were we to not have them do that, first of all, those problems would get worse, and secondly, we still have those staff members doing something else at that point. We don't fire them because they're not working on homelessness, so. There's not a savings to the budget by reassigning their work. That's all she was getting.
That's why I looked for it elsewhere, it just wasn't particularly productive to try to take it from salaries that I knew we were going to pay regardless, because we have so many needs.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I will end with just one last thing, like, again, as appreciating that treating it as a serious issue, but at the same time, let's be a little more creative in terms of how we can spend that money more pointedly to the cause. And one of the sessions I would make is to assign one council member just to, to address or to oversee the efforts being done through, towards homelessness. And also maybe, I don't know if it is a big enough to have a commission, like, like a library commission or anything, to address this issue or to, to see how the money is being spent and how efficiently the money is being spent. Those are the sessions I would like to make.
Vijay, you need to, you need to understand that the city council members don't direct the activities of staff, ever. The only person whose activities we have some influence over is the city manager.
Got you.
And with regard to how money gets spent, it's not one council member, it's a majority of the council.
Got you. The policy actions are so much different from the administration. Sorry about that, yeah. Got it, got it, yeah, thanks for the education, so. Yeah, again, thank you for the opportunity to speak and-
Very good, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, your next speaker is Judy Alexander.
Welcome back.
Well, nice to see you all again, Mr. Mayor, council members and staff. We're all coming to a better spot after the pandemic. We've experienced loneliness and lack of family, anxiety, depression, risky environments like Safeway and Walmart. Well, these are some of the circumstances that homeless people generally have as, as part of their everyday environment. We're getting back to health and happiness, security, social connections, and I think the city's moving in a very positive direction regarding my topic with Heart of Folsom being homelessness. I am a volunteer for the fire department and the police department, I'm a Heart member, so I see all sides of this issue, and it's complicated. What I would like to make a point of congratulating all of us on is that the new Bidwell Suites coming up is going to have 20 units managed by Hope Cooperative, and six of those units are going to go to Folsom residents. That's 30%. This is permanent housing for people who really need it. Heart is attempting to complete negotiations for four additional units, which will house four people in the Heart Transitional Housing Program. These are, this is a drug and alcohol-free program. Transitional means it's a bridge shelter, it's taking people who need a little extra help to get back on their feet, to do so, to give them the respect that a roof over their head has, and that can help them with their jobs and with their mental health. And I want to make sure you understand that this is not permanent housing that we're going to be supervising. We are going to help people, we're going to get them back into society, or with family, or whatever the proper circumstance is, and then we're going to bring another Folsom resident out of the parks and the trees and the ravines, and we're going to put them in those units. So we are constantly going to be trying to assist people here in Folsom residents with this program. So I think it's really important that you see the vision, and that by bringing people into housing, we eliminate them from code enforcement and the police department and Parks and Rec, all of whom do a wonderful job, but we'd rather them use their skills towards something other than a homeless person. So thank you very much, appreciate it.
Very good. Okay, do we have one to read into the record?
Yes, you had one, one comment submitted by writing. This is from Elena Hanrahan, and she writes, "Good morning, I am writing in to express my support for allocating funds to the relief and support of the unhoused population of Folsom. I understand our general budget increased funds to law enforcement and continues to rely on faith, charity- and continues to rely on faith, charity-based organizations to care for the unhoused. These people deserve support from their community and not just from charity. Please consider their needs when allocating COVID relief funds through Folsom. Thank you."
Okay, excellent. Any final comments from the public on this item? Okay, I'm gonna bring it back to the council. Any questions for the city manager or the finance director about the budget?
I'm good.
Anybody? YK?
I have few here. I don't know. I know.
This is, this is your opportunity.
That's my opportunity. No, this is, you know, Elaine and Tracy, they helped me a lot. This is my first budget here. And this helps me to, you know, prep myself for next three. Hopefully, I'll be here next three as well, unless I do some stupid things on the street. I'll, I'll, this, this is a summary of start with the kudos to some recommendations to some ask as well, to especially my colleagues. The kudos starts with, you know, when I was looking at all these details of 529 pages, our EMS services is at 98.9%, which means they are performing upright on the EMS services. I just want to, you know, call out, that number is here, hence I was able to read it. Fire chief, thank you so much, you know, convey that to your staff. And on the community development, Pam, TACIT. TACIT is going to probably help our community. I think most of the businesses are struggling to get the permits on time, not to wait too long. That's what I'm hoping on that side. I, probably my request is going to be for, similarly the way we are doing for the EMS, can we put that goal number nine, which is be accountable for results in police as well? How, our police is super. Everybody says, you know, so high about our police. Is there a way, it's a recommendation. I don't know how it is going to be implemented. Is there a way we can bring those numbers? How well our residents are being satisfied with our public safety police services? That's, you know, one request. I'm going to put it here. And the same way for, this is for community service development. What I heard, again, I got to speak to the 80,000 people here and mostly the residences in this case, people are struggling with, you know, getting those permits. I know I, I've shared this with you, Elaine, already, but I'm just want to reiterate, my colleagues will hear it. Anything we can do, right now, the people are, especially the businesses, when they go for any modifications or licenses or the plan, they, the way I'm hearing it is eight out of 10 are thinking Folsom is taking longer time compared to other cities. I did take some examples on that one. I did reach in some cases, yes. But we don't know how to say it. In order to even, you know, go over it, since it is directly involving the businesses, can we take the same satisfaction feedback from them as well? Let's see how well we are doing after they get their plan approval. They can give us a small survey, how well Folsom has served you on the community development approval. I don't know. Those are the two things. I just want to bring it, you know, number one is police here, and that one is our number nine goal, be accountable for our results. You know, our staff is doing tremendous job, but we still have to share with the residents of our 80,000, just like the EMS one. Those are, you know, a few points as a request. And in terms of the recommendation, I did see in the Park and Rec, how we are spending funds and all those. I, I like what Rosario said earlier. Let's bring the public-private partnership thoughts, how we can implement as a process and a policy, even it is a simple thing of putting a bench or gazebo that saves some funds for our city and let the community come forward. Is there a way we can implement those ones? Public-private partnership, at least the proposal going out in a formal way. This is for my colleagues. I just want to put it out there. I'm not seeing it after my research with, you know, city manager and talking to some other people. So that's a request again on the side. And going back to the numbers, I do see some of the overtimes has been used here. That's absolutely okay. This is a public document. Maybe getting some clarity on those ones in the future. I don't know how it is going to be.
Are you, are you asking about a specific departments overtime or just overtime in general?
In general, I did see it. Majority of them are using it, which is very legal and are legitimate they are using it. But this is not giving that information where and how they are using the overtime.
So we have a budgeted line item for departments that use overtime. Probably, you know, the, the biggest user of overtime is, you know, as we discussed, is, is often in the fire department because it's, you know, we send so many crews out on fires up and down the state, and then we have to backfill with personnel for that purpose. And then later, we are reimbursed by, you know, federal and state agencies for that time, so it kind of catches up. But, you know, some departments don't really have much overtime, but those that do, we, we do seek, you should see it as the budget line item, and we strive, you know, department heads strive to keep that in line.
No, no, I did go through, except, you know, two, three departments. Most of them are using some small form. Sorry, Krista, to call you out, you know, $7 for City Clerk's office also is proposed for this year. That's not my point. How do we justify that overtime in this as a small paragraph or a small table? That's all I'm, I'm looking for, because this is a public document and people may be thinking, oh, city staff is spending this much overtime, and they are not seeing what service is being provided.
Elaine, maybe it would be helpful if you could provide some historical information about overtime and in, particularly in the fire department.
Well, can I, can I actually ask a question? I, I agree with you. But can I ask a question of you, YK? Are these pieces of information that you would like to see yourself? Or are you suggesting that these are changes you want to see to the document before we approve it?
I'm, um, it's not before I approve it.
Okay.
I'm suggesting for the, that's why I made a quote, I'm going to be here next three years for the future budgets.
Okay, gotcha. All right.
This is my first one.
Because a couple of these things, like the, the idea of setting, you know, sort of satisfaction goals within the police department.
Yeah.
I, I think that is, you know, there's, there's an element to the document itself that sets some aspirational things for each of the departments and describes their successes, and then has the nuts and bolts of what they're gonna spend money on. And I, you know, like the, the P3 thing would fall into that category where it's kind of an aspirational goal perhaps, but doesn't change the actual nature of how, how the budget is constructed in terms of dollars. So that's why I'm asking the question. I want to make sure that we're clear.
But this document is, I, I'm, I'm clear on that, what you are saying. I'm looking for, this is no contingent on this budget. I'm making, this is my opportunity to share my recommendations for future budgets.
As we, as we approach future budgets to, to explain in more detail how or why we use overtime.
That's right.
And that probably may, you know, change, you know, every year, you know, overtime is there. You know, we, we can, to a certain degree, with, you know, historic information can predict about that, what that will be, but sometimes life surprises us. And, you know, things, things happen in, in departments that, you know, people have emergency surgeries, you know, stuff happens. So, but yeah, but I, we can explain that. Every department head is prepared to, you know, explain every line item of their budget, so if you have specific questions, we can always address those.
Absolutely. I mean, our firefighters, our fire chief is here. We are doing a tremendous job, and especially last year, last before year, all the fights that he's giving already, it's a matter of, you know, somebody is reading this five pages for, or six pages summary for fire department, having a, a couple of, one paragraph, it helps to see that number. It's not, we are using overtime the way we want. We are serving the community.
Yes, we are serving the community when we're using overtime.
Right, yeah.
And then that, in the fire department overtime, that is, that is always a question. It's happened forever, not just in the city of Folsom, but in every city across the entire United States. This is nothing new.
And that, the challenge, you know, the fire department, as I mentioned, not only are, are crews being called out on fires and that's reimbursed, but you deal with, you know, injuries, for example, workers, you know, compensation issues, you know, all kinds of things that require other staff to be pulled in and put on overtime in addition to their regular duties. So, because we have to have that, of course, 24/7 staffing, both in our police and fire departments, so.
Please don't take me wrong, I'm not calling on a fire department in general if there is an expense or line item. That's my recommendation, whether it is feasible or not, that's where I'm looking for my colleagues.
Understood.
YK?
If we had 25 more firefighters and a much, 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 much bigger payroll for the fire department, we wouldn't have to have overtime, but we'd have a lot of firefighters that were hanging around.
We might still have that overtime, because we still have forest fires all around California that we help fight, so. If we had 1,000 firefighters, we'd probably still end up in the same boat.
And I appreciate the comments, but I think, you know, on the public's level of satisfaction with the police department or, or community development or whoever it might be, to me, is completely separate from the budget. So we can have that conversation, but it doesn't belong in a conversation about the budget, in my opinion.
I think, I, I love to hear from my colleagues. That's where I am, you know. This is here, hence I am taking this opportunity. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I think I agree with Carrie in terms of the, sort of the aspirational nature of some of the commentary that's in the budget.
Okay.
It's just that. It's aspirational, and we end up addressing these things in a lot of different ways besides the budget, so.
So if we want to make those kind of, you know, our goals and how we are meeting, we can have, you know, as we move along, a separate discussion. That's what you are recommending?
Yeah, I would absolutely address, I mean, if, if you want to have a discussion about specifically satisfaction with the police department, absolutely, that's an entirely
Okay.
independent conversation to have from the budget.
And I do,
Thank you.
I do want to assure you, Councilmember Talon Charla and the entire council, that as your city manager, my job is to oversee all of your, all the department heads for the city who in turn supervise their staff. And customer service and attention to customer service is, is a very important and key metric when I'm evaluating those department heads in terms of what I'm, you know, hearing from our community, what I'm hearing from you as a council, so it's something that I very intentionally speak with my department heads about, you know, probably on a daily basis in some cases. So, you know, it's, it's something that's, we, we fully recognize, we work for the 80,000, you know, as well. That's what we're here to do.
Certainly. No, I, okay, if that's the case, probably I'll pause on my, the reason why I was saying on, especially, you know, on the service side, how are our service levels are? That helps us in the future, in 2022, 23, the budget is coming, then the priorities can be relooked into the satisfaction side, how cast. Our residents are feeling about, for example, Pam probably may need some more funds to help our businesses. So that satisfaction will give us, you know, to help Pam to, whatever it is, that's the driver for our city council to, to measure it. That's, that's the only reason I was making that point. So, and the same time, right, I was looking, since we are talking about our police friends. I know Folsom South is growing on, and we do have our charter for every thousand residents. We have to have one police officer. And I'm not sure, I think this year, I think our approval rate of the new permits and new houses are going high. I heard in the last, we, last couple of meetings, our pulling of the builders from 60 to now 90 or 100. Means more people are being occupied on Folsom South. Are we looking at the similar way? I don't know. This is probably for this budget question. Are we accommodating the enough officers to serve on that side here? I see, I do see it as a future issue, but the residents being occupied is right now.
Understood. And, you know, our police chief maybe can provide some more detail, but I want to assure you that we already have a beat that is, you know, that, that officers are specifically assigned to cover Folsom Plan area as part of their beat, and then as part, as far as facility coverage goes, we're about to launch an expansion of the, you know, physical building of the Folsom Police Department. And part of that is to be able to serve that increased population south of 50. That is by design. And our police chief is, you know, very strategic about placement of officers. We have locations at the Paladio, at the outlets, you know, even at our, our newest fire station, where we can position officers to respond as quickly as possible to issues throughout the city, including the Folsom Plan area. But we definitely have our eye constantly to the number of permits being completed out in the Folsom Plan area and the correlating services that are going to be needed. That's a regular topic of conversation. I don't know if, Chief Hillman, if there's anything else you wanted to add?
The point I'm making here, our police, please, come, chief. They are, I'm not saying they are not covering. That's not my point. My point is, are we planning in the budget to have officers on the ratio that people are growing on the Folsom South? That's all. We have a five-year plan here, but I just want to make sure we are supporting enough for our public safety.
The answer is yes, we're planning, and chief can comment more.
We are planning. There's a couple of ways of looking at our responses to the growth, whether we plan for a number of officers per thousand. Usually in, in California, it runs about 1.5 officers per thousand. In the nation, it's around 2.0 per thousand. We're not there. There's also a, a way of looking at it as the, the minutes it takes to respond to an emergency, not the, the petty thefts that are occurring, but the other emergencies that we go to more frequently now. And looking at the response time and what the council, as a representative of the community, might find acceptable for the police department's response. We take all this data, we try to look at it and see how we can adjust. Just last year, well, the year before last, during the budget process, we had an issue with traffic fatalities, and we had approached and asked for some additional funding. We didn't get that funding, which is understandable. What we had to do is divert officers from other duties to work traffic. So we did what we could to work around it. We do try to put officers in different areas of our city. We have five designated areas. We have four officers in those areas and a fifth during the day that is also a school resource officer. So that is how our staffing is. And, and it is something that we're always looking at, and I do talk to the city manager quite a bit about that, so that we can try to look at solutions and, and where we need to grow.
Okay. I think we're all very eager to see the pie in general get bigger. Because, you know, I, I will comment that, you know, we're, we were at a high of FTEs back in, which is full-time equivalent positions back in '07, '08, at 587 positions. Today, we're at 452.5. That's down 23%, while our population grew 26%. So we've been in a really challenged, you know, position, and we have an extraordinary staff, including, you know, the police and fire personnel who are, you know, doing amazing things while still running a very lean organization. So I just wanted to point that out. I mean, there isn't a lot of fat on this bone, honestly. There's a, a lot, a lot of people working really, really hard. And we're, and we still have not returned to that pre-recession situation that we had.
And, and we also look to find other resources, for instance, mental health response. To some degree, it's a law enforcement response when people are violent or committing crimes. We respond to a lot of mental health issues, and it takes up a lot of our time. If Sacramento County could step up and do what they're supposed to do with their mental health, that would relieve us quite a bit of some of the services that we provide and allow us to do more along the lines of what we should be doing.
Well said, chief.
Excellent editorial comment there.
I had to throw it in, you know.
Thank you.
Not on TV every day. Any other questions?
Thank you. I, I just want to make sure we do have a five-years plan, and we are taking care of our police officers on that side. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Councilmember Talon Charla. Thank you, chief.
I'll make my comments, commentary short to now dollars. Maybe this is a request for my council, my, you know, colleagues here. I do have two things to ask for and to see, you know, whether you guys can, you know, take it and before we can make a second motion and pass this budget. Number one is, I was a Park and Rec commissioner in 2016 to 2018, and I consistently see there is the entire Folsom, 20 to 30, 50% wants to volunteer in parks and trails. Everybody knows our parks and trails are great. And I know we can't, we are freezing, and it's, it's all good, because we don't have money to get more patients and all those. My request is, again, this is speaking based on my experience working for state 12-plus years. Bringing a gunshot millennial student assistance for $15 per hour is going to help, at least to temporarily fill the volunteer coordinator positions for Park and Rec, to bring more community onboard, to manage the community, to provide our services little bit more better than what we are. I'm not saying we are, don't have it, but at least we can make use of the power of Folsom, the volunteerism. And my request is here about two student assistants with a rate of $15 per hour. It is $30 on average, about $30,000. For specifically writing, it is for volunteer coordinator for Park and Rec. For specifically writing, it is for volunteer coordinator for Parks and Rec. That's one request.
Really quick, YK, is that request, full-time, part-time?
The way it works, most of the student assistants, they work 20 hours per hour, 20 hours per week when they are going to the school. If they have a two-student assistant, they can fill for 40 hours per week.
Are you talking about, are you talking about high school kids?
Folsom Lake College or Sac State, any student assistant who are doing their undergrads.
We have a number of part-time positions already in the Parks and Rec Department. Are you talking about adding more?
This $30,000 specifically calling out for.
So where would you like to pull that $30,000 from?
I'll come back to that one shortly. I think I heard that loud and clear from you when Rosario asked 25,000 last time for homelessness. Thank you for being a guide for us, and I'm learning as fast as I can. Okay, that's number one. It's about $30,000. I'll definitely see, we have so many contracts out there in the Parks and Rec. Our parks are beautiful. Again, don't take me wrong when I'm making this commentary here, but how do we make it one level above that?
So these are student, student assistants specifically to manage volunteer programs?
Volunteer coordinations for Parks and.
All right, great.
Okay. And the next one is, again, this is with my experience only. I have been very actively involved since 2016 on the Community Service Day. And I have experienced how our Community Service Day Communications Director has been effectively using last time, one student assistant. I can see a big difference the way they are delivering that student assistant. And not only that, nowadays, the millennials are super techies. How do we communicate? How do we push the communication through the social media? Or they are so awesome in, you know, techno, in the, if you go for the someone in English major. My request is, based on my experience again, and being part of the Community Service Day and other activities, probably helping Communications Department for one student assistant. It is important for them, at least the student assistants for $15 per hour, which costs about $15,000, they only work 1,000 hours or 1,100 hours per year because they're going to the school. They are not full-time. At least it is a big help for the department director, and department director time is very valuable. I rather want department directors spend that hours rather than doing meeting notes or setting up a meeting or something, something. So those are my two requests, and it costs about $45,000 additional. And my estimations are, right now, we are thinking our property tax is growing. I don't know how much Stacy or city manager you guys estimated. I'm a part-time realtor. The real estate prices are skyrocketing. My gut feeling is the dollars we are going to receive definitely is more than what we have estimated. That's number one source. And number two source, we do have a contingency fund of $900,000 as a contingency. By investing $35,000, sorry, $45,000 from contingency is the 900,000, we can certainly see the value of 10 times. If we are investing $45,000, I can certainly see how the value of the Parks and Rec goes up, how the Community Service Day, when it quantifies, we are doing almost over a million dollars' worth of work during the Community Service Days. It comes indirectly. So my request is two things. Either we are going to get the property tax higher because of the land, the housing price is going on skyrocketing, and the estimations are based on the old ones. That's number one. And number two is, I'm going to sincerely request my colleagues to consider giving $45,000 from that $900,000 contingency fund and make the $900,000 contingency fund as a $855,000. I know I had a request for our homeless friends. It has been an issue in our town. Everybody talks about it. You already are bringing a solution, so I'm not asking any on that one. So this is my request. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I want to make sure. I'm learning which ones I can talk here, which ones I can table for future. But this is the dollar amount request. I sincerely ask my colleagues to support my request for those three student assistants for those two departments.
If I could just comment, we actually, we do have a student assistant for Community Service Day. Are you, are you saying another one? Are you asking for an additional community service? So two student assistants just for Community Service Day?
Yeah.
Okay. And then is, I did send a report to all of you that we use volunteer and paid student assistants throughout the city organization as best we can, wherever we can, you know, bring them on as volunteers. And certainly, you know, whenever we can provide a little extra funding and temporary salaries, we can, we do that. This has been a very, very constrained year, and what I had to leave on the cutting room floor in bringing this budget to you is seen in every department in terms of permanent positions. So I struggle to find more, you know, paid internship positions when I can't get more officers, you know. So it's just such a tough balance right now. I would like to ask Ms. Tumani to comment. Is our property tax doing anything that we, you know, did not already project in terms of, you know, kind of above and beyond or any windfall? And also comment on the gaps that we still have that we need to fill.
Thank you. For the property tax, the, right now, the proposal that we have is based on the most recent assessment. So as Councilmember Chalantela was talking about, we will see that in the next budget cycle, all of these increased assessed values. So if the assessed values do still stay at the increased rate, then we would expect to see a higher increase in property tax for our next budget cycle.
Can I? The way I'm seeing it is, I'm thinking from last year to this year, how the properties has been increased, not from this year to next year. I can give you an example. A household was 535. Now it is selling for 620. So that, it's, I'm talking about the past.
Sure.
That's where I am. It went up almost 18% to 17% in some cases.
So YK, are you seeing a dramatic increase in the number of houses that are changing hands? Because that's the only time when you get that windfall, is when you actually have a sale happen. And if that, you know, so the increase that happens is discrete with the sale and happens at one time.
And we don't see any of that money until next year.
And averaged out over all of the residents in, all the residents, and I mean residences, homes in Folsom. That may be a small fraction that get that reassessment and cause the rate to go up.
But based on my understanding, that's one option. And other, I'm giving you two options in front of my colleagues.
No, no, I'm just, so I know that the real estate is increasing in value rapidly. Is the number of houses that are being sold dramatically different than in past years, the existing homes? Because the new homes, we've already calculated and have an expectation about those.
The percentages of the increase on the value is the.
The number of homes being sold right now, is it dramatically different than in past years?
I don't know that one.
I think, I don't have exact numbers, but I think it's way less. The market a year ago had 150 homes on the market. Today, the market has maybe 25, 30 homes, so.
It's constrained pretty badly right now, yeah.
And I will, I will comment that, you know, cities depend on, you know, we've talked about this before, you know, that revenue sources of property, sales tax, you know, programming revenues, TOT. The property tax is always kind of a winner for Folsom. And honestly, we, you know, I hate to pop bubbles, but we kind of already knew it would do fine, and that's built in. What we didn't know was that sales tax would go off a cliff, and, you know, and it did. So that's the, we're thankful for the property tax, but honestly, it's not doing, you know, to my knowledge, it's not like it's going up at some, you know, incline that we did not expect and is shocking us, you know. It's doing, we do well here with property tax, which is, I'm very thankful for.
And every Amazon truck that you see in town ensures that our property tax is not, our sales tax is not going to recover the way we'd like it to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to say I deeply respect your desire to have these students, student assistants. You know, it is, you and I have had conversations. That's how I, how I grew up is, you know, having internships, you know, and it does matter, and we seek to employ a lot of them. It's just, it's sure hard to find dollars right now. It's just, it's just really hard to find the dollars.
Good, yeah. I let my colleagues probably chime in. I'm going to make the two comments before I can close here, then we can go for voting or so. The reason I was asking on the proposal, our recommendation, which we can talk later on, bringing the service levels and satisfaction from the public, it helps us next year. When Stacy comes to us, council members, these are the priorities. Do you have change in the priorities? You came to February, March timeframe. That time, I'm only two months old, council member. I have no clue. At least if we have those numbers here, for example, for Pam and her organization, the numbers are, residents are not that much satisfied. Okay, let's help her to bring that levels up, and that could be one priority, the same way for our police officers and chief. You know, if we can give them the credit, so that's the main reason I was asking that one. And number two, on the overtime, it is not at all anywhere I'm coming out, why we are paying. That's not at all, if anybody is listening, our, you know, staff or anyone. We are spending money, a four, five bullets or three bullets, why we are spending. That way, when LM and Reid said, oh, yeah, they fought those 2,000 homes up there. I mean, just saying it, right? That's the only purpose I was asking.
That's really helpful feedback. Yeah, we can do that next time for certain, you know. Explain the overtime more for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you, Stacy. So let me, just in terms of the rules of order here, just give you two suggestions, okay? First suggestion is, you could make a motion to approve the budget with the stipulation that we draw $45,000 from the contingency that is named currently to use for the purpose that you described, okay? Alternatively, you could make a motion approving the budget and stipulating that if property or sales tax revenue rebounds adequately, that $45,000 of those dollars be put to this purpose before other purposes, okay? And then that would give the opportunity for one of the other council members to either second that, or you may not get a second, and then we can entertain a substitute motion after that.
Absolutely.
Okay, so which would you prefer?
I'm going to go for the first one. So I'm going to make a motion requesting my council members to allow that $45,000 from the contingency fund with a strong feeling that the revenues are going to be increased. But we will definitely see the value for those $45,000 in terms of the services. I'm making a motion this budget requesting $45,000 from the contingency fund.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there a second or any commentary on that or questions for Councilmember Chalantela?
The contingency, remind me again, what is that, what is that money set aside for?
I'm going to have Stacy come up and explain our contingency fund and why we have it.
We have 1% of expenditures set aside as a contingency. It's a line item. It's not actually a fund in the general fund, and typically that'd be used for emergencies if needed during the year. And if not, then that would be how we would add to our fund balance at the end of the year. So it's about $900,000 set aside 1% this year.
And as an example, things that we've used it on in the past is a pipeline failure, roadway failure, some other major infrastructure.
Both of which happened last year.
Yes, they did.
Everything happened last year.
Yeah. It started 2015 with a half a percent, with 475,000 K. Over the years, we came to 1%. So it's just 2015, 2016.
So I have a question for you, YK, then. In the event that, say, your request to take, to take this money out of the contingency, what happens in the following years? Like, what, I'm thinking of, if there's an emergency and that money is not available, then what happens in the following years with those positions? Like, what, what is your recommendation?
My request is going to be, I think I stated, starting, I have seen the value from the student assistants in terms of measurable way. So that's where we are all going to see in next one year. And it is up to our discretion, you know, we spent $45,000. We have seen a great value from those student assistants. You all may be impressed. You know what? Continue or add a couple of more. You may say that.
Just real quick, one thing. So if there are 20, 80 hours in a year, at $15 is 30,000. So, so.
He's describing three halftime positions.
Oh, three.
So one and a half FTEs total.
These are like college students that would work halftime.
They can't work more than 20 hours during the week.
Okay, see, that's why you're saying 45.
That's why.
Regardless of whether you end up with a second, let me say that your commentary was very thoughtful and solution focused, right? So I appreciate that. We've had some, we've had some crazy conversations over the years about the budget that had a sort of a demand component to them, but not a realistic way to, you know, make an adjustment. So I really appreciate that, regardless of the outcome here.
Thank you, mayor. You know, I want to give that credit to my four colleagues here. Public, if you are listening, the credit goes to my four council members. They are coaching me. You've got to be clear and provide a guidance.
Well, you provided a clear request and then a suggested funding source, and I do appreciate that as your city manager very much.
Okay. So is there a second for Councilman Chalantela's motion? Okay. Sadly, hearing none, I will entertain a substitute motion.
I'll move the budget as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the budget as it has been presented by the city manager.
And with the stipulation that, you know, as we get quarterly updates on where we are with respect to revenues and expenditures, because we get quarterly updates on the budget, if we find out that, you know, a leprechaun dropped off a pot of gold in Elaine's office, then we can talk then about how to spend that money.
Yeah, that was our commitment, absolutely, Councilmember Howell.
And that's always been the commitment.
Yeah, we're hoping as things come back that we can be giving better reports to you.
Yep.
Very good. Okay. Please call the roll.
I'd like to make a comment also.
Oh, sure, sure, sure.
I think we have two very clear examples of why we have to plan for the worst and hope for the best. COVID is a perfect example. We had to pull millions of dollars from our rating day fund that thankfully, previous councils were prudent enough to set aside. And the second is, is the report tonight, that the American Rescue Plan Act, here we've been thinking for a couple of months, we're going to get $15.3 million. Now we're going to get half that amount. So yes, we would all like to see the pie grow, but as Stacy showed us in that five-year forecast, the key to us, to living within our means, is to control our expenditures, not to hope for a windfall. And I just want to comment specifically on the $25,000, and I said this last time, and I appreciate the impassioned pleas to double that. I don't think anybody here would suggest that $25,000 line item to address the homelessness issue is in any way, shape, or form adequate. It is not, and we recognize that. But it's something, and it's a start in addition to the money that we know we have indirect costs. As far as how that money is going to be spent, I would like to have this council have additional discussions about that. And I want, I'm going to say this very plainly, so please listen to what I'm going to say. I personally am 100% in support of doing meaningful things that help address the root cause of homelessness and to help people transition out of that. I personally am not in favor of doing anything that makes it more convenient for someone to be homeless. I hope we're all on the same page as far as that goes. As far as how to spend this $25,000, I would like to have, I don't need to be involved in the discussions, you know, somebody's staff, the mayor, whomever, but I'd like to have Sergeant Zalaya very involved in those discussions. One thing that would be important to me, and assuming this is correct, the information that I've heard is that when the navigator wants to buy a bus ticket for somebody because they're going to be reunified with their family, who's maybe out of the area, out of state, or if she needs to put somebody up in a hotel for a few days before somebody moves into transitional housing, that that, those expenditures right now would be covered by Heart or Powerhouse Ministries. I personally don't think that's appropriate. She is our contracted employee. It seems like those are expenses that should be funded by the city. So I don't know what portion of that $25,000 would be necessary to help her with her expenses, but to me, that would be an appropriate use. But beyond that, I would like to have some discussions. And again, I would very much value having Sergeant Zalaya's input on that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, definitely setting some expectations and guardrails around that funding makes absolute sense. Okay, excellent. We're in the middle of taking a vote, believe it or not. Let us finish that, and then maybe we can ask a question then. Okay, any other commentary from the council?
No, I, just one thing that kind of stood out in the past as I was going through the budget. the budget process is, you know, I, I, I see a lot comes into, you know, Elaine is our city manager, but from this year to next year, I would really love to see us hire an assistant city manager to take off some of the workload. I think that comes your way that I think can benefit just overall, I think, you know, even the city and looking at just how, you know, just how, what can we do to be better as a city? And I mean, I think eventually at the pace that our city manager is currently at, you know, burnout can all, can happen that, you know, on a, at some point. And I just think for, for the next budget, I'd love to see that as to consider how we get that assistant city manager.
I would love to see that too, Councilmember. I, I, I seriously. I sacrifice, you know, that position very intentionally, you know, because of the budget situation. And, you know, at, at some point, I would very much like to have an assistant city manager. Today is not that point.
No, that's why I didn't bring it up for this one.
Thank you, appreciate that very much.
For the next year, it would be something that I think would just be a benefit.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Okay, all right. We have a motion on the table and a second. Why don't you call the roll?
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
Chal and Cheryl?
I just want to make a comment before yes. You know, I'm a team player. My, my vote is yes. I'll come back in a quarter, put my request in front of my colleagues in a meaningful way. Persistence consistently. That's my motto. I'm yes.
And Kozlowski?
Yes. Okay. Now, in the, in the interest of clarifying what just took place, if you have a question about the procedure here, I'm happy to entertain it off the, off the, off the schedule here for just a moment. Okay, if, we're gonna revisit how it is that we spend the homeless funding and what the amount of that funding is a couple of more times over the next several meetings. So there'll be plenty of opportunities to talk at more length and you can reach out to us individually also. Thank you.
Mike, I'm going to make a request that we, that we take five minutes before we start on the next item.
I think that's a great idea. Let's adjourn for a fiver here. Back to order. Okay. Will you please call the next item, Madam Clerk?
All right, let's try this again.
Will you please call the next item?
Your next item is item number 15. This is a workshop discussion regarding the City Council Governance Manual, Part Two of Two and Direction to Staff. So we just have a brief presentation for you this evening. You will remember that on April 13th, your council reviewed the first two sections of the Governance Manual, looking at sections of effective governance and roles and responsibility. And then tonight, we're going to be looking at Sections Three and Four, looking at communications and meeting protocols. So the Communications Protocol section leads with this introductory statement that just visits some of the important aspects of effective communication and why effective communication matters. And we look at its, its contribution to strong and cooperative relationships and the building of reciprocal trust. And importantly, we thought the last sentence kind of captured the fact that one of the benefits of effective communication is it does reduce misunderstanding and decrees, decreases the potential for conflict. And in looking, in mentioning that, we're not necessarily saying that unanimous agreement is always the ultimate goal. We want diversity of opinions because that's what makes a rich and strong city council. But effective communication allows there to be dissent without quarrelsome disagreement. So we felt that those were elements that were important to kind of set the tone of this section. So we first took a look at communication protocols, communication between the city council and the city manager. And this kind of revisits slightly the theme that we covered at the last time, which is the council's, council manager form of government, which directs the city manager to be the sole recipient of direction from the city council. And we had spoke briefly about the need to kind of memorialize the idea that council action should be clear and unambiguous for the city manager at city council meetings. And that becomes particularly important in complex issues when maybe there isn't a resolution that gives us direction, but rather there's a lengthy discussion. Brighton School comes to mind where we want to be clear what the council's direction is so there is a good, common understanding. And the next section looks at communication between city council members. And part of the issues that we wanted to address here was beyond just the Brown Act restrictions, which the council is pretty familiar with, but some of the nuanced restrictions that are related to social media. And as this platform has evolved, the council members' use of it has had to evolve as well. Recent legislation clarified how social media can and cannot be used by council members. And so in this communications section, we bring out kind of two key points for council members to keep in mind. And the first point is that council members may use social media. They may post their own conversation on social media, but up, that is up to the point where a majority of the council is discussing that same topic on social media. So in simple terms, two of you can, but three of you cannot. At that point, you've developed an online majority.
Business of the city.
Correct.
We could all talk about the Sacramento Kings.
You are welcome to.
Okay, very good.
And the second key point, and this was recent legislation, and the second key point of that legislation was that council members should not comment on other council members' posts on matters under the council's jurisdiction. And commenting can include liking, forwarding the posts, emojis, any type of response. And so kind of our safe conduct caution is just don't comment on other council members' posts on city items.
Just for clarification, prior to the item being discussed, after, does it apply?
After action has been taken, we talk later in the, in the section about expressing, you know, personal views versus the views of the city council. So we draw that distinction.
And you have to be a little bit cautious because just because the council took an action on something today, doesn't mean the council couldn't reverse that action or modify it two months from now.
Absolutely.
Or it may be something we revisit every year. So you're, you know. Steve, is there other distinctions there that we should?
No, sir. The, the law under AB 992 is just that. It's any matter within the legislative body subject manager's station. It doesn't matter whether it's before or after the action is taken.
I didn't know that. I think Vice Mayor, I liked your post this today when you posted Agenda. So even likes, I'm just kidding.
About the Agenda, YK. You don't need to like Sarah's post. You've already read the Agenda.
No, more people will see from my 5,000, that's all, if I like.
Well, please, please don't do it. You want to post the Agenda on your page, go right ahead and do that.
Okay, so, so let's unpack this actually, since we're talking about it, just, just because this, this is a unique kind of example. If council, you know, the vice mayor posts the city agenda as a heads-up kind of post to the community that follows her, is there any harm in liking that post so that it gets more widely distributed?
I think this post specifically went on the chat, like the fulsome chat.
I, I'm using a hypothetical at this point. So she posts it to say, hey, we are, we have these items on the agenda for this evening. Come if you're interested or follow if you're interested.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, so how does that fit into the?
That's actually different than what AB 992 is talking about. So if you're sharing information from the city, such as the Agenda, it's, it's not an issue. It's when you have discussion such as, I think this item is X, Y, and Z. I believe we should support. I believe we should not support. I, I, whatever. You're expressing an opinion about a matter within the city's, city council's subject manager's station. That's what AB 992 is talking about. Posting, reposting a city council agenda, posting, reposting your city newsletter without any comment, without any support or opposition of, of any kind, no issue.
So purely informational without a wink or a comment is, is fine?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
But, you know, I would add on to that. So prior to every council meeting, I do post the highlights of the Agenda and a link. And that's fine, but I don't post any commentary, but sometimes in the comments, somebody may comment on about a particular issue. And so if you're going to like the post, but you haven't read through all the comments, and maybe I did reply to somebody's comment about, so it does seem like it could be problematic. So maybe the, maybe the safest thing is just not to like it or.
Or copy the link and post it on your own page.
Yeah.
Yeah, my, my general advice would be just to, you know, not, not be engaging on each other's posts because it's just, I just try to always think of it as like a big, it's just a big conference table out there. And you just need to be sure that, you know, suddenly, you know, you know, two doesn't become three without your knowledge because somebody's lurking out there. And then suddenly you have a, you know, basically a de facto meeting that wasn't, you know, publicly noticed. So you gotta be really careful out there.
Because over a couple of year time period, we had to frequently explain to the general public predominantly on fulsome chat, why the council members were not weighing in predominantly on comments that were being made by one council member. Why is Sarah not weighing in? Why is Carrie not weighing in? Why is so-and-so not weighing in? And we routinely had to explain, we can't do that because it's not legal.
I would just say in an overabundance of caution, you know, it would, I would, I would suggest that you not comment on each other's posts or like them or, you know, whatever. That would just be a, you know, general, probably, you know, completely overabundance of caution, but still.
And that sounds like it tracks perfectly with the commentary that's in this guide so far.
Vice Mayor, you won't see my legs going forward. Thank you.
It helps.
Please continue, Krista. Oh, sorry for the bird walk there.
No worries. Another, another element that we wanted to kind of just touch upon was this concept of keeping each other informed of activities in the community on city-related actions. And part of this was really to respect that all council members have equal standing on all issues and no council member owns any particular topic. And so while we're saying it's a good idea to keep each other informed so you all know what's going on, we go a little further and say, and the place to do that is at council meetings. So we, we suggest that those announcements be made during council member comments, which seems to happen on a pretty regular basis now. We hear from council members of their activities out in the community. So we kind of just wanted to help not formalize, but memorialize that structure of keeping each other informed and this is the safe way to do it. And along that same vein, we put the concept of reporting out on regional agency actions. Again, that has become more of a norm on this council, but we wanted to bring that to the council's attention, that that is something that is, is good and should continue. Because council members come back from their regional agencies, they serve, so they can gather information that's important to fulsome. And so there's value in bringing those actions back so the council becomes aware, aware of what is happening. Another item that has been kind of caused a little confusion is communication between council members and the public. And so we thought we'd maybe try to make it clear just the different nuanced situations of speaking for the city and the idea that certainly council members can speak on their own behalf, but if their position is in opposition to what the council has taken, that they should report that and say, you know, well, I support this, the city council voted against it or vice versa. It's important that confidential information be kept confidential. We think that's pretty self-explanatory, but since we were talking about communication, we thought we should go ahead and put that in here as well. And then correspondence was another item that we just brushed upon. Now typically correspondence that, that conveys the city's position on an issue is signed by the mayor as the ceremonial head of the city. Other council members can certainly correspond with individuals, with other agencies that they're working with. And there's no roadblock to that. Again, it's just if you're speaking on a position that's different than what the council has taken, or the city council hasn't considered a matter yet, that that needs to be shared. And lastly, we looked at representing the city on regional agencies, how important the council members' active participation is on these regional agencies. We kind of memorialized that how council members are assigned to these agencies, which is typically they are proposed by the mayor. Most of these agencies have bylaws that govern how those appointments are formally made. Most of them require approval of the city council. And that's something that you'll typically see come back occasionally as those memberships get shuffled or after elections. And again, reporting on regional agency actions, we encourage the council members to do that during their council comments section of the Agenda. That moves us into council meeting protocols. So I borrowed shamelessly from the Brown Act for this introductory statement, but I've always loved it. And it's, it's in the preamble. And really, I think the important premise here is the last sentence, that people insist on remaining informed so they may retain control over the instruments they have created. And the meeting protocols that we have here are really shaped by our internal processes, how the council functions internally and by state law, which governs, you know, the Brown Act and what you can and cannot do. But both are intended to support this very important principle of the Brown Act. So obviously, our meetings are conducted in open fashion in compliance with the Brown Act. We sometimes have questions about how items get placed on the Agenda. So here we relied on fulsome municipal code section that, that says that the responsibility of developing the Agenda rests on the mayor and city manager. We talk about how items proposed by a city council member can be added to the Agenda. And we really, we continually go back to that section of the Muni Code that says the mayor and the city manager develop the Agenda. So really, items proposed by a council member or by the public, both would route typically through the city manager or the mayor. Now, if a council member would like to propose something and we're, and there isn't certainty on if the council wants to take it up, it can be placed on Agenda as a preliminary item, much in the same fashion as we did with this Governance Manual in November of 2019. When the vice mayor first proposed it, it was placed as a preliminary item before staff had done any work, but just to see if the council had an appetite to take this issue further. And in fact, they did. So this, this item itself is an example of how that process would work.
Sarah, Sarah proposed it to me. I agreed completely. We had a brief discussion and the council all agreed that it was, that it would be a good thing to do.
That's right.
And that's why we had staff move forward.
That's exactly right. And part of the point is that is so staff has clear direction if the council is interested in moving forward, which also means staff time being spent on this project. And then just to reference that the municipal code says that we will use the most current edition of Robert's Rules of Order. We go over city council meeting norms. I won't go into too much detail unless you are interested in it. But we just kind of give some examples of what motions, the most typical motions are. We talk about how proclamations and resolutions, commendation are scheduled, requested and approved, how we would handle external presentation. And then probably the most legally important on this slide is reporting and avoiding conflicts of interest. And in these protocols, we list, the FPPC provides a four-step process. And what that is, is it gives you ideas of what the four criteria are that might constitute a conflict of interest. Now, in listing that in the protocols, we do not, we're not trying to have the council members make their own determination if they have a conflict of interest. We strongly encourage that conversation to be had with the city council before a meeting when there's an item that you may have a conflict with. The reason we included it though, was to give you an idea, this might be something I might have a conflict with. And it's handled exactly the way council member Howell did tonight by, if you have a conflict of interest, you report the nature of it and you recuse yourself from that item. If it's an item on a discussion calendar, the council member must. If it's an item on a discussion calendar, the council member must leave the room. If it's on the consent calendar, they can simply recuse themselves from the vote. And, and lastly, in the meeting protocol section, we just wanted to reference these companion documents. And you may remember these, they were part of your orientation packet. But because the purpose of these other two documents are consistent with the purpose of the meeting protocols. We wanted to reference them as important companion documents. So the next step in this process is we will receive council feedback, update the draft. And then we will bring the governance manual back, um, for your final approval at an upcoming meeting. So with that concludes staff presentation and we would welcome any questions or feedback that the council may have.
Okay.
I think it was a great job and I want to thank Sarah for bringing this up in the first place. And I think, um, you guys are doing a wonderful job at putting the document together in a clear and concise manner. That explains what we can and cannot do and provides guidance that I think I wish we had had in the past. And maybe we could have avoided some stumbling that the council as a whole and individual council members in particular have had to endure.
Here, here. Okay. Any questions Rosario?
There was just one question. It's on, um, page one of the communications protocol. It's the second paragraph in the bottom, second sentence. I didn't quite understand that. City council members are strongly encouraged to ask.
Page one, Rosario?
Uh, page three fifty-seven.
Okay.
Which is page one of the communications protocol. Uh, let me see here. City council members are strongly encouraged to ask questions about agenda items during their review session. Rather than hold all the city council meeting questions. I didn't, I didn't understand, so.
Yeah, I, I noticed the same. The wording's a little funky. I think it should say something like. You're strongly encouraged to ask questions about agenda items during the review session, rather than holding all questions until the city council meeting.
Yeah, I agree. That could be coded better. Okay, yeah. When I read that, I went, I, I read it like 10 times. Sorry about that.
No, no, no.
It's fine. I'm glad, I'm glad that.
And I want to make clear that's, that's not intended to say that, you know, you can, I always say that you can ask questions of me in an agenda review. And then feel free to repeat them here because you just want the public to hear that. I don't want at all give any impression that you, you know, have to quietly ask me and then you're not allowed to repeat it and go through it again. That's fine.
Yeah, and, and we say exactly that in here. Um, council members are welcome to ask the questions again at a council meeting to benefit other members and the public. Really the point of that is asking the city manager questions before the meeting enables any necessary research or staff work to be done. To answer the question in a meaningful way. Rather than at a council meeting where then now we have to continue the item because we don't have the answer. So, but I will adjust that wording to make it more clear. Thank you.
I thought it was excellently, really well crafted with that exception. So thank you. Any other questions, Rosario?
No, no other questions.
Carrie, any further commentary?
Great job.
Sarah, let me also thank you.
Yeah, so I just have, uh, three things. First of all, thank you to Krista and Lydia and everyone. Um, I particularly like the quotes that you stuck in, uh, the beginning of the different sections. I want to make sure with the city attorney that I'm clear on something. I'm on page seven of sixteen of the staff report. I have it electronically, so I don't know as far as your hard copy. I understand the possible Brown Act violation when people are, multiple council members are commenting or liking or whatever the same post. But I just want to clarify this key point. A city council member may have their own conversation on social media about a matter within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction. Up to the point when a majority of the city council members starts to have the same conversation on their own. Once there is a majority of city council members having their own separate conversation on social media about the same subject matter. Then those conversations must cease altogether. So if three of us were to do our own separate posts saying, how do you think we ought to spend this $25,000? That's been allocated toward the homeless effort, that would be a problem.
That is correct. You're reading the statute correctly.
Okay. All right. Good. Thank you.
The problem however, and I, I think this is the difficulty in all of you to, to, to be cautious about AB nine nine two. Is how would you know that one of your colleagues happens to have also commented about the same matter? On their own separate social media posting without you even knowing.
It could be across multiple platforms too. I might comment on Twitter, Facebook.
That's the difficulty. Correct. Unless you also monitor each other's social media.
Never look for me on TikTok.
Okay, thank you.
And I didn't go to that party in Huntington Beach over the weekend either.
Um, and then the only other change that I would request that we make is on page twelve of sixteen where it talks about city council meeting norms. Most governing bodies do this incorrectly. We tried to be pretty good about it. But I would suggest it goes number one, staff presentation, two, questions from the city council, three, public hearing or public comment. And then instead of four being discussion and deliberation by the city council. It really should be a motion and a second because that focuses the discussion. So we know exactly what it is we're deliberating on. Then after the motion, do the discussion or deliberation and discussion, however you want to put it. So four and five really should switch spots.
That is accurate relative to Robert's rules also.
I would make on that though, is maybe we add another item that says questions of council members, then the motion, then the deliberation.
Questions of council, is that different than number two?
By council members to staff.
Isn't that number two?
Well, it, it's possible to have questions that are stimulated by the public discourse, I suppose. So it, it's really just the.
Additional questions you could say?
Cross examination, Sarah.
Yeah, it's the discipline of segmenting in your head, questions from deliberation.
Right, right. Okay. So we could go staff presentation, questions from the city council, public hearing or public comment. Follow-up questions from the city council, if any.
Yep.
Motion, then discussion and deliberation, and then the vote.
I agree.
Yeah.
There's a lot of conversations and discussions that would be much shorter if we followed that process every time.
Makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can make that switch if that's the council's pleasure, which it sounds like it is.
Okay. Other than that, I'm, I think it's great.
That tracks with Robert's rules also. It's totally appropriate, yeah.
Okay.
We'll do our best to maintain that discipline.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Excellent. YK, any comments or thoughts?
No, this is, this is, this is going to help me.
Good, good, good. Yeah.
In month five and, you know, going on that. Only thing is, are we going to have a review once in a year or once in a two years how we are doing amendments?
I, I don't, I don't think we necessarily need to set a cadence for revisiting the guide. But there's no reason we can't at any time come back to it and make modifications.
I would suggest that the only time we would need to review that is A, when we have new elected officials sitting on the council. And that should be part of the overall orientation program. But in the event that there's changes in the state law, that would require changes to the, the meat of the document, then that needs to be accounted for.
When I was on the school board, I mean, they do review their governance document every year. I, I think, I don't know that that's necessarily, but I agree if there's a change to state law, if we have a change in personnel. Then those would be appropriate times for sure.
The, the only reason why I was just bringing that review is people do make mistakes. And bringing that to the attention and as a part of this review, Brown Act and all, that's, that's the only reason.
Oh, you're gonna hear about a mistake long before we have a discussion about this document from somebody.
How?
Um, if, if, if we suspect that there's a Brown Act, someone will say something to the city manager. Who will then immediately get the city attorney involved. Or you'll hear from one of us directly that, um, hey, Sarah, YK and Carrie, stop talking about this on Facebook. Cause there's a lot more people watching the stuff than you think.
But also.
We'll, we'll wait for that one. That's all we are saying. After the things we are saying, I'm saying more proactively. That's all. It's anyway, I'm good. Thank you.
I just think it's important to point out though, that this is not intended to be punitive. This is kind of, hey, this is what we're striving to.
Aspirational.
Exactly. Yeah.
I, I have one question and there may be no answer to it yet, but I think it's actually for Steve, our city attorney. Um, there, there has been some discussion that I've heard about the potential to make some modifications to the Brown Act. To allow for public meetings, um, for remote access to public meetings for the actual participants in the, like, the elected officials. Or perhaps staff to, you know, come in by video or something like that without having to notice all of those other locations. And I think the, the, I'll get to, you know, I probably could bring it up in my comments about SECOG. But it came up in the context of SECOG where it's a huge convenience actually for some members of the SECOG board to be able to participate remotely. Because it's a long drive from where they.
Yes, sir. I have heard of that as well.
Is there anything in this guide then that should that change that we're, would need to be modified? I, I don't think so, but.
No, sir. Uh, we, we don't necessarily need to do that because that would be part of the Brown Act update.
Okay.
And, and that will be statutory, but we do possibly need to update council resolution nine six eight nine. To, to account for the, the change in sequence of the council meeting norm that the council just discussed.
The possibility that one of us could participate remotely if the law changed without noticing the location we're at.
That, that will have to wait till the legislature takes action, but I have heard of that as well.
Honestly, Mike, in the 23 years I've been sitting here, that, I, I would probably say that happens maximum once a year.
Oh, yeah. I've only seen it happen one time personally, so.
There is a bill.
Except for maybe Ernie participating.
It happened in the past, actually during, it happened once or twice during the cap to cap trip.
Yeah, I think Michelos did it remotely one time. I remember that one.
Steve did it one time and I know that Jeff and I did it one time from a conference room on cap to cap.
That's the one I remember. Yeah. Okay. All right.
It may have happened a few times because of cap to cap.
Okay, gotcha. All right. It, it's, it's immaterial tonight, but excellent work. Thank you very much. And Sarah, again, thank you for bringing it forward and Carrie for your enthusiastic support of this. Very good. Okay. Let's call the next item.
Okay, your next item.
Before we move forward, I apologize, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
The direction to staff would be to come back with a resolution to formally adopt? Or is the council good just giving staff the okay now regarding the governance manual?
No, I think we need to see the wording.
Yeah, I, I, we'll bring back, um, the complete document at an upcoming meeting first. So the whole document is approved by resolution.
You can have, you can, in my opinion, you can have a, um, a resolution that accompanies it. We may or may not approve it that night. Cause I can't believe somebody's not gonna want to tweak a word or two.
Yeah, but we definitely, um, I mean, obviously we made a couple of changes tonight, but we did add something in based on a suggestion from YK. I can't remember what it was, but it had something to do with the.
For a new council member.
Yeah. So there is gonna be a little bit of wording that was even different from, from part one.
Yeah, we added that and we added some beefed up language to the introductory page of effective governance. So I think it would be appropriate to bring the entire document back with the resolution that approves it. And give the council one last look at it before we bless it and call it, call it ruled.
Plus then we're not looking at it in two pieces. We're looking at it in one piece.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, and there's no particular time sensitivity to this, so.
Oh, you'll have it by the end of June.
Okay, excellent. A time sensitivity for the staff, it sounds like. Okay.
You'll have it.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. City of Folsom Legislative Advocacy Program.
Yes. So we're bringing before you tonight, the new legislative platform and manual for the city council's consideration. And the idea of legislative advocacy is certainly not new in Folsom. The Folsoms had a long history of effective advocacy with our federal, state and regional agencies. And this has been aided by really effective long-term relationships with both state and federal lobbyists. So the benefit of bringing a formalized platform and manual is that it provides documented policy preferences for the city council. And clarifies roles for, um, everybody who's involved in the process. So the legislative platform begins with four foundational legislative principles. And these, these look at the four important tiers of preserving local control and promoting fiscal stability. These are the two, we'll just stay with this slide for a second. And the city obviously has a strong interest in preserving local control. And certainly in promoting our fiscal stability. And, and this includes things like we will oppose legislation that shifts local funds. And anybody that remembers the state's triple flick tax scheme from the early 2000s can appreciate the complication of the state taking authority over local revenues. So, you know, that, we would say that would be one of the foundational principles of this platform. Next, we just looked at the concept of supporting diverse funding opportunities. That we would support a wide variety of opportunities for the city to compete for its share of funding. And then of course, any legislation that would enhance the quality of life through adequate public safety. And this includes, of course, supporting criminal justice laws that reinforce public safety. But we also looked at legislation such as the ERPOs and red flag laws and how important those can be. California is one of about 19 or 20 states that has those red flag laws on the books. So that's something that we want to be mindful of. I will not go through all of these, but we have just over 60 individual policy statement areas. And that's really the meat of this legislative platform. Where we really get into in a little greater detail, the types of legislation that the city would support or oppose. And things that we would proactively take action on based on those policy statement areas. Now I will just say, um, those, those policy statements were reviewed with all of the department heads. Everybody had an opportunity to put, to provide input and give feedback. So, um, we, we can look at any of those if you would like, but that's, that's kind of where those came from. And the second part of the, of the document is the manual. And really the, the dual goals of the manual is to describe the internal procedures. And this is to help ensure that the city's position is effectively communicated to legislators. So within the manual part of it, we look at really what the clear roles are for the city council, city manager departments and commissions. Recognizing that the city council is the lead voice and lead authority on all policy preferences for the city. The city manager implements that policy. And then the departments and the commissions also have a role in identifying areas of interest and communicating that to the city manager. We document that the mayor is the typical signer on correspondence that conveys the city's position on legislation. Uh, the vice mayor, of course, would act in absence of that. We also wanted to establish procedures in special circumstances. And, and really what those are is the circumstances where we don't have a clear policy statement. And there's an item of legislation that we feel the council should take action on. We wanted to make it clear, here's our process. And really there's two scenarios there. Either we have time to come to the council, in which case we would bring the item to the city council for policy preference. Or if there is no time to come to council, then the mayor and city manager would take a position that would be conveyed to whomever the legislator or the committee was. And then that, that position would be brought back to the council at the next meeting to ratify. So that the council as a whole has not denied an opportunity to weigh in on potential legislation simply because of the lack of time. And with that, staff would recommend approval of the legislative platform and advocacy manual. And we would take any questions or suggestions you might have.
I think it's a good idea, especially since we've not had this before. And I think it clarifies the kinds of things that, that the council as a whole is gonna take action on. And I think it provides a little reminder, um, to those of us that have been around a while. We know that the amount of positions that people ask us to take, whether it's a resolution or take action on a proposed bill in the assembly or the senator at the federal level. And in many, many, many of those instances, the city have, the city, it's not in the city's best interest to take any kind of a position on a lot of the things that people ask us to take positions on. They're religious in nature. There's, there's a laundry list of things that we have never taken action on. That in many instances, people were annoyed that we wouldn't, but it's not in the city's best interest. And I think it's important for all of the council members to understand that we need to look at unintended consequences of taking positions that the city of Folsom has absolutely no authority nor interest in. So we need to protect the city first. So I think it's, it's a really good idea.
Yeah, it's a funny, it's a funny coincidence this, this came forward. And I've had, I think, three different people ask me my opinion about AB eleven thirty-nine, which none of you should know anything about. But it's a, it's a possible, it's an attempt by. which none of you should know anything about, but it's a possible, it's an attempt by a couple legislators to roll back the incentives for rooftop solar in California. This is an example where I personally have an opinion because of the work I do. The city might have an opinion if it affected us directly, but it is a thing that would only ultimately affect the investor-owned utilities. So people that are in the territory of PG&E and Southern Gas, San Diego Gas and Electric. So being a SMUD customer, is all of us, it's irrelevant to our interests. So there's all kinds of examples of stuff like that that's outside our lane and not in our, you know, not really.
Except I thought it was going to affect SMUD rebates as well.
At, so every previous time that something like this has come forward, it has ended up excluding the public utilities. It's the community utilities like SMUD or MID or TIC.
Just for fun, I actually, the president of Aztec Solar is a friend of mine. I may give him a call and find out.
I'm confident he has an opinion about it, or they have an opinion about it. Yeah, it would be crushing. But anyway, that's a bit of a bird walk. But it's a coincidence that, you know, to your comment, Carrie, there's a lot of stuff that happens in the state Capitol that may or may not have any effect on us, may or may not be in our interest to comment on. And, you know, may unintentionally pit us against people that we had no intention of picking a fight with, you know.
I really enjoyed this document. I thought it was very, it was very thorough, very informative. There were things that I pulled out of it and that I learned and thought, oh, this is great, so, yeah, great. Yeah, great draft.
Now, if we follow our own instructions from a few minutes ago, we should only be asking questions.
I will move the item. I will move the item.
Do we have any public comment? No, okay. Alright, so we have a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second commentary. YK, anything?
No, I'm good.
Okay, Sarah, do you?
I do, and I don't disagree with your comments, Carrie, but I would also say the opposite in that there are a lot of things that happen at the state Capitol that we should take a position on. And a perfect example is, last meeting or the meeting before, we adopted a letter or directed, I think, the city manager and mayor to write a letter about the bill that would have mandated that we get rid of the license plate reader data within twenty-four hours.
I don't disagree with you, there's a whole bunch of stuff we should take.
And, you know, that, and I doubt the City of Folsom letter put, you know, was responsible for this, but as the city clerk reported to us, that has now been moved to the suspense file, right? So there's things that we need to be more proactive on, so that's why I like this document. I did have a couple things that stuck out to me, and you referenced one of them up there, Krista, but on page ten of twenty, I'm assuming we borrowed this document from somebody and we're just kind of adjusting it. First of all, in the very intro, it has our population at seventy-some thousand, so it seems like we could update that. But enhance quality of life through adequate public safety. Support criminal justice laws that reinforce public safety protection for Folsom residents, yes, I'm on board with that. Support legislation that protects public safety by reducing access to firearms through measures such as extreme risk protection orders or red flag laws. I'm not exactly sure what those are. I assume if somebody had a mental health issue or something that flagged them to not buy a firearm. But somebody, I think, could interpret the first part of this is that we're, you know, infringing on their Second Amendment right or something like that. So I wonder if there should be something in there about.
Maybe Chief Hellman.
Reducing access to firearms in these certain instances or something, but certainly not a blanket statement.
Yeah, Chief Hellman, could you clarify what those?
I can explain those.
Oh, I'm sorry, Krista, my apologies.
That's okay. ERPOs and red flag laws are a civil remedy that are available to law enforcement agencies and families whereby they can petition a court to temporarily take possession of firearms from an individual who's deemed to be a danger either to themselves or to members of the public. Now, remember, this is, it's a temporary taking of the firearms. And these laws can be controversial because some will argue that you're denying the person due process rights because they're being taken of their firearms before they have committed a crime. But these are laws that have been put on the books because after these mass shootings, family and law enforcement say, we knew this person was a danger, but we couldn't get the firearms away from them. So ERPOs and red flag laws are one tool to help in those circumstances. They are by no means a perfect tool, but they are one tool that families and law enforcement can use in those situations.
I guess I'm just wondering if we ought to insert a couple words, something like, support legislation that protects public safety by reducing certain individuals or whatever access to firearms. We're not talking about just a blanket statement. We're talking about this very, very specific.
But the way that is worded, Sarah, it basically addresses the issue of someone that, where the family, the police department, whoever, has reason to believe that there's a mental health issue, that threats have been made. Because this has happened in some cases where there have been shootings when family members or other people close to the individual that was the potential risk made that request and it was not acted on.
Yeah, I get all that. I'm just saying, to me, this seems like it's, we're saying get rid of access to firearms. But what we're intending is, for this very specific population, that there's a concern about. It just seems to me we ought to add a few words in there somewhere.
Then maybe we explain what ERBO means.
Yeah, we can work on that language a little bit. I think I hear what you're saying, that you'd like that tailored a little more clearly or more narrowly, so public safety, reduce access to firearms in, you know, certain situations when warranted through ERPO or red flag law.
Yeah.
We can tighten that language up. I think I hear what you're saying.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
And then, under Administration Number Four, support open government initiatives as well as the principles of the open meetings provision of the Ralph and Brown Act at all levels of government. While in general, I would say, yes, we would support that, I mean, there's, I don't know how specific we want to be on things because there's always examples. For example, there's an Assembly Bill three, three, nine right now that would, it requires, I'm looking at it here. It came to my attention during a local government committee with Assemblyman Kylie, where you'd have to, they've now taken this language out, but originally, we would have to provide interpretive services. And you have to, let's see, the bill would require legislative bodies of local agencies to make available instructions on joining the meeting to all non-English-speaking persons upon request and publish the instructions in the two most spoken languages other than English within the local agency's jurisdiction. That has now been stricken, but there are some things that they want to add in, you know, because of the Brown Act, but they're so onerous to local governments that that may not be something that we support. So, again, I don't know how you remedy that in this thing. Just another couple, just quick little things. Under Number Thirty, support measures that recognize and provoke presentation of the unique development and design, patterns should be patterns, Number Thirty. There's just a little typo. And then sixty-two enhances should be enhanced, and then that's all I have.
Thank you for finding all the typos, Sarah.
Could I offer a suggestion that perhaps approving this tonight is not ideal? And that tabling it to our next meeting so we have a chance to more thoroughly read this and, you know, make some corrections that have been suggested already.
And I would recommend, just to further that, that maybe we just put it on consent. And if anybody's got.
When it comes back.
And if anybody's got an issue, once we get the documents two weeks, you know, on Thursday, that contact Elena or Krista and.
Yeah, I don't want to deny you a vote on your motion, but it feels like maybe we could use a little more time to read this, each of us, more carefully. I know that I could, at least.
I have no problem with that. I'll move to continue it to the next meeting, but, you know, ideally on consent.
Okay.
I'll second.
I'm fine with that. Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue this, to consent at our next meeting.
Councilmember Howell.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Chalamchela.
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, please call the next item.
Okay, your last item this evening is New Business Item Seventeen, Governor Gavin Newsom's drought state of emergency and direction to staff.
Mayor Kozlowski, members of the council, Marcus Yasutaki, environmental and water resources director, bookending your meeting tonight. And thank you for all those that are still listening in or watching us online. This is a discussion regarding Governor Newsom's recent drought emergency order as well as some of the regional actions that have taken place amongst the Regional Water Authority and some of its member agencies, which the city is a member agency. So some background, it was issued December tenth, twenty twenty-one. And really what this did was expand on the previous order that he had issued probably a couple weeks prior, which now included thirty-nine counties, one of those being Sacramento County, which obviously the City of Folsom resides. Some of the things that are specific to this was the authorization of a drought salinity barrier in the Delta, which was used back in the twenty fifteen timeframe. And basically, that helps keep salt water from intruding into the Delta. It does help. And what that also does for Folsom, Shasta and Orville, it does require less water to be released, less fresh water to be released to keep that salinity barrier out, or the salinity level out if a barrier was not installed. So it would take more fresh water from upstream reservoirs in order to keep that same compliance point. And so it is a benefit in terms.
My personal feeling is that salinity barrier should be there all the time.
Yeah, I'm sure others would agree, and I'm sure there are some that disagree, but yes. But, you know, it is something that is planned to go in this year. They did authorize, or the governor included wording to expedite water transfers from the places in need to the places, or the places that have it, to the places in need. And they did prioritize transfers that maintain storage for releases later in the year. So if there is an opportunity to transfer water, let's say in October, November, December, as opposed to the typical timeframe, which might be July through September, they were, or are supposed to have a priority in getting approval for the transfers. Doesn't impact Folsom in the sense that we're transferring water, but it does impact others that would be looking to transfer water because it does allow more storage to be held longer in the water year. And then, it continues to authorize the Water Board to adopt or consider any emergency regulations that are related to in-stream flows. So if they believe that a certain stream or river system within the state needs a certain amount of flows for environmental protection or other reasons, the board would have the authority to set those. But it doesn't include any emergency mandatory conservation measures. So something different than what we saw in twenty fourteen and twenty fifteen. I just wanted to recap for those that don't know, this is just the city in context in twenty twenty-one. The supplies available are at twenty-nine thousand acre feet, and the expected demands are about nineteen thousand acre feet. What I did not do, and this was include that Aerojet Get Water because we're not physically going to put it into our potable water system. So these are potable water supplies that you're looking at here. What I did want to point out, though, as well, is just the last ten years of water use within the city. So you can see a fairly significant reduction from two thousand and eleven to where we are in twenty twenty in terms of how much water per person is used per day.
Which coincides with the water meter installation.
And so, you know, that is one thing that's important, I think, for our community to understand is they have done a great job in the last ten years reducing water use on a per capita basis as our population has increased. So, you know, much kudos to, you know, our residents and our businesses out there that have taken on, you know, maybe a different view on water use efficiency. And we do understand that there is still work that can be done in that regard, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later. And then, just the information on the right is just to give you some idea on just the reductions of diversions. The twenty-five percent is a total, total take from the reservoir or diversion from the reservoir, so that included raw water that we were sending to Aerojet. And then, if you just looked at potable water only from the twenty-eleven, twenty thirteen average to the twenty eighteen, the twenty twenty average, we're about fourteen percent of a reduction. And that's a fairly, in my opinion, a strong number for our residents and our businesses. These are just some graphics of kind of reservoir conditions. On the left, these are some of the state's larger reservoir systems. You can see that all of them are below the historic red line. New Malones and Don Pedro are probably in the best. I should say Lake Paris, although that doesn't have any impact on who we serve. But New Malones is kind of the closest one to Folsom. That's reasonably well in terms of this year. The location or the map or the graphic on the right just shows where our precipitation is in the water year. So you can see currently we're at twenty-three inches, which is below the twenty fourteen, fifteen timeframe, below twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. I don't anticipate that we're going to get anything more moving on from May through the end of September. So we're going to track, you know, right above the second driest years in seventy-six and seventy-seven. Snowwater content, for the most part, it's non-existent now. You know, you're looking at statewide average, as of yesterday, one percent, two percent. So equivalent, in my opinion, of zero available that would come into any of the storage reservoirs. And then you can see just on the right, just how that tracks relative to other years. So, you know, the numbers you could see fall off quite a bit here, here, and there, and that's in the dark blue line. So some of the regional actions, the Regional Water Board, Regional Water Authority Board adopted a resolution two, zero, two, one, dash, zero, one on May thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Some of the highlights, they just described basically what conditions currently look like. But there were a couple of requests in there for RWA member agencies. One was an opportunity to shift from surface water to groundwater supplies if you have that available. And if, as you probably all know, but maybe those that are following online do not know, the city has relatively no capability to access groundwater within the City of Folsom. We've, I think I know of two Department of Water Resources grants we've received drilled six to eight wells throughout different parts of the city and really don't have anything that's of useful production that would offset, you know, potable water use within the city, so.
Couldn't even pay for the cost of the drilling. There is no groundwater here.
And so what we have done, though, is we are working with our neighbor agencies that have access to both surface water and groundwater. And a recent project that we worked with Golden State Water Company, we're working to finalize the physical construction of that project is right next to Nature Wood. And that is a connection between Golden State's infrastructure and the city's infrastructure, which would allow water to move in from Golden State into the city. So what we have to do at some point in time is we have purchased a pump for a physical installation. We've got to run a trial that would move water from Golden State into the city. But we have to be careful as to where that water is delivered because the zone in which that water is delivered kind of comes up into the Natomas Station area. But we don't want to do anything that would put that water into Gekakon Saki or Kikumen because that is not the quality of water that they currently use for their production purposes. So there are some physical limitations to where we can put that water, and it just would require us to do some physical valving so that we ensure that Kikumen and Gekakon receive the surface water, treated surface water that they currently have now, and we don't want to mess up that process.
And I believe that was in their contracts with us initially.
And so, yes, there is, I believe, provisions as to the type of water that they would receive. One of the other items is a request from member agencies to reduce surface water diversions in the American River watershed. So it's not just switching over to groundwater, but if all you have is surface water, can you make any reductions? And then, a request to member agencies to ask, to, for myself to come back to city council to consider a reduction of a voluntary ten percent in water use. And so that's one of the main reasons why we're here tonight, is to discuss that specifically. City response, as I mentioned earlier, we are already increasing our outreach and messaging, whether it's through the webpage, social media, the e-newsletter. We do highlight in each one of the announcements our Water Conservation Division, how to get in contact with that team, whether it's through email or phone, because then somebody, a homeowner or a business, can set up a water audit, a Waterwise House Call, can discuss how to set up a timer. I know we've even had customers who didn't know how to physically install a new timer. And so our staff has gone out to help physically install a new smart controller at somebody's house. And then, like I mentioned, weekly conservation tips. One of the things we could do, if it's, you know, the pleasure of the council tonight, after getting feedback, is we can even get more specific in terms of, should we identify, you know, days of the week watering? Not tell them that you can have Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or something to that effect, but. But if they are currently watering four days a week, could they water three days a week? Or if they're watering four days a week at fifteen minutes apiece, is it okay to water four days a week at twelve minutes apiece, right? So just some small tips in that regard that may help.
I actually think we should be doing that now.
And and so that's one of the options that, you know, is obviously up for discussion tonight. Again, the irrigation runtimes. Then this i- is in our municipal code, but basically the times of the day in which to irrigate, so ten P M to ten A M. Uh, one thing that uh, when I talked to Elaine about this was, under the municipal code, the city manager has the authority to make the calls on the conservation stages. But what we wanted to do was to bring this in front of City Council so that, one, you all are aware of what we're doing and provide feedback. But two, the public has an opportunity to hear what we're doing or what we're proposing to do uh, in, you know, this public platform. Other options uh, that's available, uh, we could just invoke the mandatory uh, conservation actions on the municipal municipal code. And so that's uh, always an option. Uh, I if you wanted to identify a different voluntary water use reduction target, so instead of ten percent, you wanted fifteen or twenty or or something different, that's that's an option. Uh, if there is a desire to increase patrols for water waste, that's that's an option that does come with costs because either we're having to hire patrols or we're asking uh, city staff to do some work other than their their daily jobs, if it's something that's done during the day. And then uh, if for some reason we, you know, brought or wanted to discuss any uh, increase in rebate funding, similar to what we did in twenty four, twenty fifteen, twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen, we brought back a couple of items to City Council to increase funding in our uh, rebate programs. And so we did offer up more rebate opportunities at that time. And these are some of the items, irrigation efficiency upgrades, smart irrigation controller upgrades, uh, and then other potential water efficiency upgrades. But the first two really get to your outdoor irrigation, which in the summertime is forty five to sixty five percent of water use at a residential property. So those are kind of the big areas of focus that would, in my opinion, and probably in our water conservation manager's opinion, get more bang for the buck if that's something that City Council would want to consider. So-
Marcus, I have a question.
Yes.
So in the situation that we're in, I know too many people that that life is great and they don't really care what's going on because life is great. And so they um, don't read emails coming from the city, they don't look at social media. Um, you know, the we get a um, informative flyer to our homes, you know, just of what's kind of what's happening. How else is information getting communicated out to residents that we're in a dire situation when it comes to water?
So back in twenty fourteen and twenty fifteen, we actually had then, at that time, direct mailers that went to uh, the customer's place of business or the resident's uh, house. We we have not done that yet this year. I mean, obviously we have any information that gets put in the city newsletter, but that's obviously, and Christine could probably correct me, on certain delivery dates, right? They're not maybe as, we don't have as much flexibility with that as we would with a direct mailer, where we can only focus on, say, water conservation or water use efficiency.
Marcus, how about we just add something to um, the existing utility bills that are actually being physically mailed? And I would further suggest that that be targeted to neighborhoods like ours that are thirty plus years old, or maybe the sprinklers haven't been replaced. And, you know, both Rosario and I have really big lots. And I think that, you know, there's neighborhoods in town where that's more typical. Folsom Ranch, they're much smaller lots, they're, you know, they're far better um, equipped for dealing with having drought tolerant um, landscaping. And there's other neighborhoods in town that are more that were constructed more recently where the same thing is true. You know, I'm thinking the area around here, the north side of the river, that's where we ought to be targeting this stuff.
And and so we could, and and that's another option, is to do uh, utility bill inserts. Uh, again, that is obviously only when utility bills are sent. So if we want to get something either more frequent or sooner, uh, we'd have to do that. And uh, obviously then, you know, if it's a direct bill insert, and Stacy can help me. Uh, but I don't think that a direct utility bill insert would hit those that pay online because it's not physically inserted into bill.
No, but maybe maybe there's the people that pay online, maybe there's another way to send an email or an electronic notification to them if they live in those those certain areas of town. And I'm guessing it's by zone from the water plant.
Yeah.
By the way, my grass is brown, but I did have to fill my pool. And that's where I I today, and I it was, it felt like a lot of water.
So Marcus, can I just-
Senior pool, it was a lot of water.
Can I have you back up just a little bit and unpack what the governor's order demands of us, if anything? What the regional water agency asked of us specifically? And separate those two things from what we may do independently here in Folsom.
Okay, so-
I want to make sure we're crystal clear about this because I'm not really game to make a commitment to other people outside of Folsom that might try to take those and make them more permanent over time. But I absolutely am, you know, interested in us being good neighbors to our, you know-
So I'll go just back to page two, the last bullet. Uh, there is no specific required action by the city of Folsom or other water agencies to institute any mandatory conservation measures.
All right. Uh, I just wanted to make sure we were clear about that bit. So the so the Regional Water Authority Board, then what is their ask?
So their ask, uh, specifically for Folsom-
The ten percent reduction.
Is a voluntary ten percent reduction. Is their ask from city customers, uh, Plaster County Water Agency customers, city of Sacramento customers. Each in each member agency uh, is asked for a voluntary ten percent reduction.
Gotcha.
So even though we had on, in the history, close to second on the levels of water, that's what you showed in the previous picture, right?
I'm I'm sorry, I'm not understanding the-
Second lowest.
Second lowest.
Second lowest in the history of the water levels.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Governor and we're not getting anything from the governor's orders, even, okay.
That is correct.
That's okay.
So we thought, you know, at this stage, it just would be particularly important to do some pretty robust public education, you know, rather than, you know, specific demands or requirements or mandates. But just reminding people, as Councilmember Rodriguez said, that, you know, water is a precious resource, you know, in this region and in California. And just, you know, be be, you know, apply more and more outreach, you know, above and beyond what we already do.
Yeah.
Some of the thoughts I have reaching out is nonprofits and religious organizations sending this message through them. I don't know, um, um, we have any restrictions on that? That way sometimes they focus more when it comes from their church or from their nonprofit organization there belongs to.
I have a-
Desecration.
A list that I developed, um, you know, just it was born of need in the pandemic of contacts at all the religious organizations that I've turned to a number of times, you know, for support over the last year and would be glad to share this information with them. I think that's a great idea.
Sarah, thoughts?
Uh-
Questions, comments?
I guess, Marcus, my question to you is, do you have any specific recommendations of of things that we should implement? The second thing is, what could the city do in terms of setting an example with reducing our watering at our parks and our fields and that sort of thing? And then the third thing is, perhaps we could reach out to um, the Chamber of Commerce. I mean, an easy thing is at a restaurant, you know, don't just bring out water. People have to ask for water, you know, um, don't top it off, wait till the the glass is empty or something, you know? Um, but certainly I'm I'm personally more in favor of the the carrot and just asking people to to volunteer because um, I I think when you start putting in some of these restrictions, you can only water, you know, who's going to drive around and enforce that? Like you said, then that we have to hire staff and all that sort of stuff.
No, the neighbors narc on each other.
Yeah.
Yeah, so uh, if you're asking my opinion, uh, which I think you did, um, if it ju- just, I guess, as an example, stage two in the city's municipal code is set up, and and we will be fixing this to match the water shortage contingency plan, but it's set up as a a way to achieve up to a twelve percent. Now, I don't know how twelve percent became the number, but up to a twelve percent reduction. And it does get specifically to identifying three days of watering per week, which talking to, you know, Don Smith, who's our Water Conservation Coordinator in the past, to make it through a summer, uh, not, you may have some brown spots here and there, but it's not going to completely ruin or destroy or kill your grass, that that would be, you know, something that could make it manage through a a dry year. Uh, so that could be one item that we specifically focus on as part of the messaging is to, you know, institute three days a week. My personal opinion, uh, if funding was, you know, just completely available or people had the funding available themselves, is to invest in an irrigation smart controller. Because that uses weather data to do your watering. So you don't set it for, you know, Monday, Wednesday, Friday for fifteen minutes or eighteen minutes on your own. That's going to set it at Monday for twelve minutes, then maybe Thursday for fourteen minutes, and then again on Sunday for twelve minutes. So it takes a lot of the inefficiency out of uh, setting your irrigation timers.
Did we, we we did a rebate for those once before, didn't we?
And so we do have that, and that's one of the things that we are, we just re-upped one of our programs with a ratio controller through the Regional Water Authority, which is to partially rebate or refund uh, somebody buying one of these controllers. I believe it's a hundred dollars off of a hundred and seventy five dollar purchase, I believe is what it is. Um, that we we rebate back to somebody that buys one of these ratio controllers. So I think through a combination of messaging, but I think it should be targeted messaging, not just, hey, everybody use water efficiencies efficiently. I think we should offer, you know, suggestions as to how a homeowner or a resident can do that on their own property. And that could be days of the week watering, recommendations, you know, irrigation efficiency upgrades, et cetera. Take advantage of the tools that we have to offer uh, as a city.
Is there any technology, Marcus, that, you know, that tells us, well, I know that I have an average daily use for my home, where if I'm exceeding that, maybe there's just a text message that will go out to let someone know, oh, you're you you've exceeded your, I don't know, your daily average use. Um, it where at least it kind of, it puts it on people's minds, water, you know, um, ensuring that we're conserving it and also maybe letting someone know that, I I don't know, there's. I I don't know. I mean, I just, there's there are cell phones, you know, technology is-
I think a citywide program would be a little little on the pricey side, but that we had this discussion actually when the uh, um, the leaks that shall no longer be named were happening about leak detection devices that do that job exactly. They'll let you know if there's an unusual pattern.
We do have the drop-
Shows up in your bill.
We do have the drop counter app that, you know, um, provides that information. You know, you can, you can look at, like, I I am, I constantly look at it to see how I compare with households my size to see if I'm, you know, under that average. Um, and it does, and you do get a flag from the city if your water use is is extreme or kind of out of line for sure. But Marcus can comment more on that.
Yep, and and with that drop counter app, you actually have to go inputs, you know, you have to put some inputs in there um, to, so that it can best characterize your your household because it'll ask for the number of people, how many irrigation sprinklers do you have? Is your land flat or on a slope? So it will ask uh, some of those questions to you that, you know, our team can help if somebody doesn't understand how to answer the questions. Our team can help get that information in there. And then, yes, there are other technologies that will give you real-time instantaneous uh, information that would, could I, that says, hey, we noticed there may be a leak because water's been running for fifteen minutes at eight gallons, eight gallons a minute. Because I get that notice on a device that I have, but I know that it's my front yard irrigation system or it's the backyard irrigation system, but you do get that notice. It will even read when the automatic pool device is filling the pool after the pool equipment's run. So that's, you know, how low that can get. And then they've got other more expensive ones that will automatically turn your water off from a remote device if you so choose to, to to your entire house. But that requires plumbing and everything else to be done.
In in terms of this discussion, ultimately though, I think it sounds like we're mostly in agreement that starting an education program to try and achieve a ten percent production and water use makes sense. And um, I personally think you're right on the money that working with people and how they irrigate is the way to start, so.
Go forth and conserve.
And we will strive as, you know, as we always do as a city organization, to set the best example as well with our water use.
Okay, beyond that, do you need further instructions?
I think we have the instruction we need.
Okay, great.
Clear to me, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, city manager report.
All right, good evening, everyone. PG&E will conduct important gas line vegetation work um, between the Johnny Cash Trail and East Natoma Street on Tuesday, June first. Uh, seventeen trees have been identified by PG&E as being close to their underground pipeline. Uh, this work should take approximately one day to complete. The Johnny Cash Trail will remain open to bicycles bicyclists and pedestrians during this time. And you can find out more at pge.com forward slash G A S V E G. Um, recognizing the financial strain that the COVID nineteen pandemic continues to have on local businesses, U S the Folsom City Council unanimously unanimously voted in April to offer a relief waiver to businesses with license fees of six hundred dollars or less. The one-year waiver applies to new business license applications and renewals from July first, twenty twenty one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. Uh, and you can find out more at folsom.ca.us forward slash business licenses. And in late June, the city of Folsom will at long last launch a new user-friendly online payment system for its utilities customers. Online features coming soon include make a payment online by phone or by text, view and pay your bill online with a credit card, debit card, e-check, Apple Pay or Google Pay, go paperless, get an email notification when your bill is ready, pay by phone or check uh, twenty-four seven, and there are no convenience fees. And you can find out more at folsom.ca.us forward slash newbillpay. And that is all I have, Mayor.
Excellent. Okay, um, council comments. Rosario, anything tonight?
Yeah, I've actually had a really good time the last couple of weeks touring um, some departments. Um, I really enjoyed talking with Susan Walters and the Human Resources, and we had a really good conversation, met up with Steve Wang. And I just have to say that the city of Folsom is really fortunate to have Steve um, um, working for the city. He's um, really a sharp guy. And enjoying my time with Stacy, um, I hope I don't chop your last name, Tamani? Tamani in finance, and um, it was a good conversation, actually, right as we were going through this budget cycle. And then today I met with the public library, I had a really good conversation with Laura Easterwood. And I'm really embarrassed to say that I haven't had a library card in ten years, and I got one today. And so I work right across the street from Ruby's Bookstores. So I, you know, I try to support small businesses, but one thing I learned is I could still support Ruby's books and then donate the book to the library. And there was a couple, there was one that we pulled up that there are like thirty-six people waiting to read this book. So I went, oh, I could still support small businesses and then donate to the city of Folsom Library. So really good tours. Um, I just want to remind everybody that there's future Folsom this coming Thursday from eleven thirty to one. Um, it is registered with the Chamber of Commerce. There are some really good topics on this particular um, um, meeting. It's on recovery forecast, how Folsom and the region can thrive in twenty twenty one, and then retail reimagination with Christopher Thornburg and Ken Hera. I actually had a conversation with Ken Hera last summer, and he is a really sharp guy. Um, I I'm sure this is going to be a really um, really good um, meeting. Um, and also the Folsom Pro Rodeo is coming up. It's almost five weeks away, July second through the fourth, and then the Hometown Parade on Saturday, June twenty-sixth at nine thirty in the Historic District.
Carrie, can you top that?
Um, yes. We had our RT board meeting last night, um, life is good um, at RT. Ridership is up, the finances are stable. Um, they're working on, you know, as as we all know, they're still working on ensuring that they're going to have the financing to do the double tracking up on in our neck of the woods, so that's all good for Folsom. Um, we have Regional Sanitation District and SASD tomorrow, where we will be announcing that Christoph Dobson will be taking over for Prabakar and as Prabakar will be retiring later this year. And I believe that our finance director, who has done an amazing job, um, Joe Mustardy will be retiring actually just before that. We're having a presentation at tomorrow's board meeting commemorating his retirement. We will miss him desperately. He is the guy that has has gotten the- He is the guy that has, has gotten the district's finances well under control, and I dare say the district is probably in better financial shape than any other jurisdiction in the region. Um, the Connector JPA, which is Southeast Connector, White Rock Road Project, we are meeting on Friday morning. So, um, and what else? I think that's it for the moment. Um, the usual, people are, you know, people are going back to work or are driving more. Um, they're still driving like maniacs, and I, on a daily basis, and I don't even drive around that much, because I'm generally busy all day, but on the occasion that I do have a chance to drive around, I can, cannot believe the number of people that are speeding, like they're the only one on the road, because there really is a lot more traffic now than there was eight months ago. And they're running red lights and stop signs like it, like it doesn't matter to them. Please stop doing that, because somebody's going to get hurt.
Words of wisdom. Sarah?
Uh, just for my colleagues who don't have kids in the schools, just want to make sure you're aware, Folsom Cordova School Board continues to have conversations about whether or not to continue, um, to contract with the Rancho Cordova and Folsom Police Departments to have SROs on campus. Um, the latest that I have heard is that, uh, it will probably be a three-two decision. Which way it goes is anybody's guess. Um, the data indicates that SROs are needed more in Rancho Cordova than in Folsom, but the district sent out a, a survey to parents and students, asking about your interactions with SROs, and do you feel comfortable with them on campus, that sort of thing. And the results of the survey indicate that majority do not want SROs in Rancho Cordova, but they want them in Folsom. So, they don't want them where they're needed more, they want them where they're not needed as much. So, uh, it will be interesting to see, uh, what the school board ultimately decides to do, but I think they're getting tired of talking about it, and just want to make a decision and move forward here in the very near future.
More, more evidence of, uh, how much Folsom, um, residents trust our police department.
That's all I have, thank you.
That's right.
Why, Kay?
Okay, my comments. Before I go to my comments, uh, maybe for Elaine, I know we removed, um, consent calendar item number seven.
Yes, sir.
If it is a local road safety plan, I know we are applying some grants for state, and that's the main reason. If it is a local road safety plan, I would love to get some presentation, what all the things happen, and how the traffic safety committee has recommended to improve the road safety.
So when it comes back to you, it will not be on consent? You, you will hear it as a presentation?
Thank you.
Yes, and that will be, I think, at your June twenty-second meeting. And I did specifically ask that be heard as an item, as opposed to consent.
You read my mind then, because it's eighty-nine pages, I was reading it. You know what? It's an important one. I want to hear from the superstars. Good. About my comments, um, this week is going to be Folsom High and Vista Delago graduation. All seniors, congratulations. I know Thursday is, uh, Folsom High, and Friday is Vista Delago. Awesome job. And, uh, you know, I can't read my own writing. I, I'm meeting residents and, uh, predominantly, you know, trying to understand, and those are the comments why I was making comments on the budget and all those, to see what I hear from my eighty thousand bosses. Of course, they're all for us. Right? And the other one is, um, a, a passionate group of people, they approach me, they want to serve the community. Then I told them, right along the timeline, I posted on social media, see, click, fix, how to use, and how to help city to help you better. So they started doing that, see, click, fix, and, uh, including, uh, the one, uh, they was, uh, you know, recommending sidewalks, uneven sidewalks, and all those. I think so far, they got forty to fifty sleek clicks has been reported to the city. My goal is identify the problems. How to address, we'll figure it out as an expert city staff. So identifying the problem is the one, those, uh, and I said, like, the kid and mom, when you guys are walking, wherever you are going, open that app, just click it if you see an issue. Right? And, uh, the other one, I think, uh, last week, I made a full efforts to make sure, uh, I try to reach out our city staff, learn about, uh, after management, and I'm going to some of the staff and meeting them, and, uh, especially the, you know, our police, um, week was, I think, last before week, and paid attention to them. And even, I met their briefing time. It's very interesting to see how the shift moves from one to other and what messages they pass. You know, it's all confidential, but it's very interesting. Now I see why Folsom has excellent public safety, you know, the way they are doing it. I think that is all I have. Thank you again.
Okay, excellent. I just have a couple of things. Um, SECOG and STA, we had real similar meetings where we, uh, kind of like we've been doing here, reviewed the budget and the work plan for the coming year. Um, both were approved, um, without too much drama, and we, at both meetings, ended up having the conversation about possibly being able to continue with some version of remote access for those boards, because unlike our city council, where we all happen to live close to each other, um, here in the city, those boards are distributed all over the region, and it would be a nice, um, possibility for people to visit, uh, do those remotely. Um, also want to extend my congratulations to the graduates from Folsom and Vista Delago High Schools. Um, it's been quite a ride for these kids that are graduating this year, and, uh, grinding it out to the end is, uh, is really admirable for, for all of them. They'll have good stories to tell their grandkids someday. Um, I got to do a bunch of fun stuff in the last two weeks, which, thank goodness that the world is sort of starting back up, but I wanted to extend congratulations one more time to Powerhouse Ministries and everybody involved with, um, bringing their new facility to life. Um, it's remarkable, the work that they do there, and the facility that they now have really fits their mission much, much better. So that was, that was fantastic. Um, some time ago, we approved a over, an overnight vet clinic called All Creatures, which had their ribbon cutting and is now serving customers, um, on East Bidwell there, so.
They've been open for two years.
They had a ribbon cutting this past week.
Okay.
So, I call that officially, officially, officially open.
No, I, it's just, I'm like, I brought my cat in there two years ago, right after they opened.
So, some of this stuff is because there's a backlog, because there was COVID over the last year. So my next one is one of those things. I got to go to an Eagle Scout promotion ceremony on Sunday for a young man named Carlton Lydon, um, who is pretty remarkable, and, um, I would not be shocked if we don't find him at the space station someday in the future. He's, uh, he's the one, um, Folsom kid out of hundreds that are within Ambarra's, um, um, congressional district that asked for a, um, appointment to a military academy. He's the one that got it, um, beating out lots and lots of other, um, well-qualified candidates. So he's going to be, um, at the US Air Force Academy starting in about a month. Um, and then, um, the two, like, exceptionally fun things I got to do, and just a nice reminder for everybody of some, some current events that are going on. Um, last Saturday, I got to be a judge for the Foothill Wine Festival, which was, um, which is being put together by some wineries from throughout Eldorado and Amador and, and local counties, um, and our Chamber of Commerce here in Folsom that's going to take place in November, um, here in Folsom, um, for the first time. And I got to help judge the wines for that, which was great fun. Um, and then, last but not, absolutely not least, um, congratulations to Handley's Westernware, which, um, over this past weekend, celebrated their sixtieth anniversary of being in business here in Folsom, essentially in the exact same spot. So they, um, that's a multi-generational effort to make stuff like that happen, and, uh, um, all congratulations are due to the Handley family. So, with that, I will say, uh, thank you to everybody, and adjourn our meeting at nine fifty-eight PM.